This is the public hearing and final budget workshop. And I'm going to turn it over immediately to Mr. Van Campel for a presentation.
Need to take roll call.
Oh, sorry. I suppose even for workshop?
This is a special meeting.
A special meeting. Yep, sorry.
Boog Rower, Crosey.
Here.
Eschel, Miller.
Here.
Ellison, Osby, Herman.
Here.
Omery.
Here.
Present four.
Okay, so I just kind of did a brief PowerPoint just to kind of walk you through. And for anybody watching or anybody in the audience, just to kind of walk through our 2020 annual budget. This is just the operating budget at this point. And I think we'll have the workshop on the CIP in just a little bit. So, just to kind of recap, if you look at all of our different funding sources, most of our funding comes through the general revenues. And this is just by sources. And we have the intergovernmental revenues, fines and forfeitures, license and permits, enterprise funds obviously makes up a big chunk. So this is kind of slicing up the pie where we're getting the money from in kind of a big picture viewpoint. This graph is actually just got adjusted this afternoon and we can hand it out later or kind of go through it at the final adoption. But the big bump in 2020 is in prior years, we only had the general fund and only the levy portion of our special revenue funds. If you look at our schedule as we went through the workshop, work sessions, we actually report a much higher revenue number. So the spike you see in 2020 is only because we're showing all the revenue. And so I just wanted to point that out real quick.
So we're just accounting for it differently?
Yeah. And we've gone back and accounted for it in the past, the way we're accounting for it now. It's basically it's enterprise and other special revenue fund.
The original purpose of this graph was to point out to you the blue line.
The shared revenue, as you can see, it's just-
Or lack thereof.
Lack thereof. In 2009, we were at $11 million. In 2020, we're at $9 million, $9,690,000. So in the last 10 years, it's gone down. And so, you know-
I think, I think let's take a second and expand on there, Russ, for all the people at home to understand that they take our money in the beginning and then they say they're going to give it back to us and then they don't. So can you just take a couple of minutes and explain to everybody watching on TV how bad they're giving it to us?
Huh.
My words, my words.
The shared not giving it to us. And the shared revenue is a program that the state of Wisconsin distributes money back to local governments. And be honest, if you go back to the program's creation, it actually started back in 1911 where the state actually introduced income tax for the first time. And at that point in time, 80% of the money came back to local governments. It was called shared revenue. Since that time, they've gone away from that allocation or return to roots where the money's collected, went to distribution method based on need. And then for the last six, seven years, it's actually been frozen just on an appropriation basis. So this is money given to the city of Oshkosh from the state of Wisconsin.
But they take it from us first before they give it back.
And they take it from the taxpayers, the income tax program.
Right.
So-
And it's declined every year.
Yeah, the, it's not kept pace with inflation. It's actually declined, but it's kind of been about the same amount in the last four years, but it's-
Last seven years.
Seven years.
Plus or minus $20,000. It's nine, six, something every year since 2012.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's frozen. When you adjust for inflation, that's really reduction.
Well, absolutely.
And then on this graph, I just wanted to show and illustrate 100% of our revenue and where we get it. And basically for most cities and villages, you look at, you know, intergovernmental revenue and shared revenue is only one piece of that. There's other aids coming from the state of Wisconsin. But this just illustrates shared revenue, the percent of all of our funds that comes from shared revenue. The red section is the levy amounts that we collect from levy. And then the green is all other revenue sources. And again, the 2020 is a little skewed in this graph because the green section from 2009 to 2019 is actually underreported because it doesn't include the utilities and some of the other special revenue funds that we do in 2020.
So the shared revenue did go down this year?
Yes.
And, and the previous six other years prior to this?
Yeah, it's fluctuated a little bit, yeah. So the biggest question then is, you know, what does the city do with its money? Most of it goes into operations that the bottom, light blue is the general fund. That's primarily our, all our operations. Special revenue funds are those funds that we account for on, on individual basis for the city of Oshkosh, you know, the cemetery, the library, the museum. And there's a whole list of other special revenue funds that we just account for individually. The debt service is the amount that we go to pay principal and interest. Enterprise funds is our utility, water, stormwater, sanitary sewer inspections. That's all in the enterprise funds. Tax increment districts, that green slice, and then a couple of other component units, other funds are represented in those smaller slices. On the general fund, again, most communities, it's kind of a one-third, one-third basis. But in Oshkosh, we rely a little bit more on the tax levy. The tax levy in Oshkosh represents 41% of our general fund revenue. Intergovernmental revenues is 35%. And that includes that portion of shared revenue plus other programs. And then the other remaining miscellaneous things that make up just under a third. So that, that's where we're, the general fund gets its money.
What's the charges for services? Would that be like on that back?
Yeah, how do I get this to go back?
Just hit the up arrow or the page up button.
The green?
Charges for services would be anytime we collect money as a special charge in the general fund. Let me look at those. Jennifer, do you know right?
Yeah, it's like the-
Ambulance?
Ambulance is the largest.
Ambulance.
Yeah. Sanitation permits, any kind of other permits that would be large, pick up garbage items.
Special events are included in there?
Mm-hmm.
That's one of the larger ones. And then there's also the engineering division. It's sort of an internal charge within the system, but that's technically a charge for service. The engineering division charges the capital improvements fund for the work that James' folks do and they reimburse because the engineering division is in the general fund under justice division. So those are the charges. So that's in order, it's ambulance, engineering fees, and then probably special, yeah, special events probably third in that list.
You've got to charge those billable hours.
Yeah, pretty much. He's like a mini engineering.
Yeah, the CIP pays the general fund for the services of the engineering division instead of having to hire consultants.
Yeah. On, on the expenditure side, no secret, most of the general fund expenditures are going to public safety. About 60% of our budget goes to public safety, police and fire, ambulance. General government's the orange section, public works, parks, community development, transportation, and then other unclassified. So that's where most of the money's going.
Oh, parks is more than community development?
Yeah, you have to remember that this is just the general fund. So for example, the community development block grant program, that does, that's not reflected in here.
So again, when we get back to the levy and, and the collection of levy, pretty much, like I said before, most of the levy goes to the general fund. A big chunk of our levy is going to debt service, about 30%, maybe a little bit less than that. That's rounded up. The other big levy section is the library. It's 7% of the, of our tax levy goes to the library. Street lighting, museums, senior services, the amphitheater, the water park, rental inspections, the equipment fund, transit, and the opera house. So that's kind of, just looking at the piece of the pie where the levy all goes.
You have the dollar slide too, right?
I think so.
Where?
Yeah, the 0% doesn't quite make sense.
Minuscule.
So 7% goes to the library right now?
Yeah.
The dollar one, I think, shows it.
Okay.
So, you know, and then all it is, is this is a percentage of it. You know, for, for the tax levy, we're looking at $19 million in 2020 for the general fund, which is up 2.3%. And then you can see the other corresponding dollar amounts and the percentage increases for each of the funds and each of the types. And so total levy, looking at an increase of $1 million or 2.7%. Assess valuation, again, when I tried to bring this into the graph, it kind of got, the columns got shifted around a little bit. They're all centered. But basically, we're looking at a small increase in the valuation, the assessed valuation. And this is TID out. So this is the part of our valuation that we can spread our levy across for the collection of city services. We still do the levy for the tax increment districts, but they're accounted for separately. So we want to illustrate what the valuation is outside of the TID districts because that's what's really paying the base operational cost. The middle section is equalized value. Basically, we're at about 92%. So if a sale of a piece of property occurred at $100,000, we would have it on the books at 92.6. This is on average, community-wide, and that formula is actually derived from the sales that actually occurred.
How, do we have a number where we stack up against similar communities when, when this is here? And if we don't, I'm sorry, I should have maybe asked that earlier. So my apologies.
Yeah.
No, we have multiple measures. Ellers looks at that all the time.
Yeah, I don't have a graph of that. I have the last couple of years. Again, state says you have to be within plus or minus 10%. So, and this is always kind of, that ratio is kind of after the fact because they actually compare sales. And so if that gets below 90 for five years or three or five years, then you have to go through a revaluation process.
Okay.
So we may be looking at a revaluation process. You can see from 2017 to 2020, we've gone from 96% to 92% of market.
Okay.
We do have, one of the measures that's used is property value per capita, and Ellers maintains that. And we, we report that to Moody's when we do our, our bond issue presentations.
And the, the big thing that I wanted to note here is we're still waiting for the lottery credit number, but based on $150,000 home, which I've been told is about average, the average property impact for city services would be an increase of $37.12. So to pay for city services on $150,000 home, you would be paying $1,624.44. Sometimes that gets lost because you're looking at the total tax bill.
Which is, which is the school district, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
County, everything.
Right.
Okay.
So what you, what you have control of as city council and city government is what we do for city services. And again, on a typical-
So on $150,000 would be $1,600 would be our tax bill to our customer.
Right.
Okay.
So an increase of $37.
$37.12.
Mm-hmm.
So what I ended up doing is taking that $1,600, just so that people can put this in, in perspective, and, and broke that down on a monthly basis. And if you look at city services, you're looking at $135.37 a month. And then this is where our money goes on a monthly basis. If, if you were to take that tax bill that you get at one time a year and divided it out monthly, this is what you're paying for police and fire, library, public works, general government, garbage collection, transit, street lighting, our capital improvement levy, parks, museum, community development, senior services, cemetery, and then all others.
That, you do ask the question about the 0%. This is when, when you're slicing it down this thin, you can see it's, it's a monthly, it's a monthly cost.
I know we, we-
Well, well, sorry, go ahead, Steve.
I was just gonna say, I know a lot of times we send out in our tax bill, I think we spend out that pie.
Yes.
That should go with it.
This is awesome.
This, this, this is something that I think, you know, just an extra sheet of paper, whatever it might be. But this really explains to me, to the taxpayer, where their money is actually going. And the reason I found this very helpful in, in other presentations to other government elected officials is so often you hear stories about the tax bill that comes out on an annual basis with all different taxing jurisdictions, you know, including the county and the technical colleges and the school and everything else. People lose sight of what this really means on a municipal or city standpoint.
Right.
And, you know, if you put this in perspective to any of your other monthly utilities, I would argue that you're getting a pretty good bang for city services, you know, based on that.
Especially if you took out, and obviously we know the debt with the street constructions and things like that. If you took the debt out of there and looked at what we actually spend for kind of that day-to-day service, which is police, fire, public works, general government, garbage.
But the library gets more money than the public works?
These are the numbers.
Yeah.
Yes.
You could say garbage collection is part of public works. You know, you could say in some cities, transit is part of public works. We're not. But, but our, our pure public works comes from, from that amount. So it's, yeah, it's $9.
But I picked up the levy that goes to those other special funds that we talked about, special revenue funds, and they're represented in here as well. So, you know, we broke it down based on, on where the levy's going and what this translates on a monthly basis. And I think that's pretty much it of how much I wanted to walk through before the public hearing. Public hearing, again, this is a working document. It's the opportunity for the public to weigh in before you do the final adoption next week. So this is just a high-level overview of where our 2020 budget is right now. And of course, we can have additional discussion with the budget enhancements that we talked about a little bit later. But I think the next step in the process then would be to get, if there's any public input.
Do we have anyone?
Yes.
Registered?
Yes, we do. Deb Martin, 164 Wildwood Drive.
Thank you. I'm here in support of the conversation that the city council is having with the school board to allow children in our school district to be able to ride the city bus for free. I heard an interesting story yesterday from a principal. She said about a mother calling into the school office and crying because her car broke down and she cannot afford to fix it. And her kindergartner, five-year-old, has to walk 1.9 miles to get to school. That makes no sense. I also heard some pretty high numbers of truancy that have been taken, and our number for truancy is low. But what we do have, a high amount of that is due to weather days like today when children choose not to walk that one-plus miles to school. So I appreciate that you're having this conversation. I really encourage it to, to go through. Another statistic that I heard recently that really struck me too, $15 for a family to, for one child to go to school every week from a family who is on free and reduced lunch. If they cannot afford a lunch for their child, and now we're asking them to pay even more for a bus every day, that just, with 50% poverty in our, in our city, I think, I saw the budget, there's great information, but there's a way that we can help our children. And I appreciate that this is a serious discussion going on now with the council. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else registered?
Pam? No one else is registered.
Okay.
Call it closed.
So we are closing public hearing and moving into the workshop session.
That'll be Mr. Robbie.
Turn it over to Mr. Robbie for public works, CIP, I'm sorry, CIP.
Yeah, this, the CIP is just now, you've heard from all the other departments, but the bulk of the CIP is public work. So Mr. Robbie has a brief presentation and I'll-
I'm gonna keep the presentation real brief, but I am going to pass out a few materials, excuse me, for you, some additional things that we had not previously distributed. So just a few extra materials here for you tonight. And those are- Got a lot of handles. The first, the first one of those documents that I passed around, the rather lengthy one, is kind of an overall summary document. If you, if you recall, the past couple of years worth of capital improvement program plans, I kind of put a short, short, five to 10-page summary in the front of the CIP that kind of gives a little bit of background and history on the street and utilities information, summarizes a little bit about where we're at from a Pacer standpoint, breakdown of street materials and Pacer rating by, by material, some new additions this year, or some additional graphs in this summary document to kind of, you know, it builds a little bit upon the materials that we handed out during the budget workshops last week as far as the Pacer rating goes, but kind of gives you a pie graph view of where the streets are rated at from failed to excellent condition. Little bit of additional summary in that document, kind of some explanation of the last few years where the projects, as far as, you know, what's been going on and, you know, why some of the numbers are up and down. You know, if you look at table four on, on page four, you know, you can see over the last five years, you know, mile and a half, you know, two miles, four miles. So, so not a significant amount of street surfacing being accomplished in the last five years. And then the table just kind of gives a little bit of a summary regarding what projects were going on. From there, the summary document kind of breaks into each of the utilities and, you know, how much work is being done, you know, on each of those. So the water main summary, you know, we're proposing about a mile and two-thirds of water main replacement this year. We've got roughly just under 320 miles of water main in the city. Industry standard would be to do about a 1% replacement per, per annual. So that's, you know, would be a little over three miles. And we're, our proposed CIP for next year is under two miles. So you can, you can see, you know, we've had some good projects the last few years, but, you know, still got a lot of work to do on the, on the water main side in particular. Utilities, obviously, you know, we don't have a rating system like the Pacer system for streets for the utilities. It's, it's very difficult to get a visual inspection done on utilities, especially the water main, which is a closed pressurized system. With sanitary sewer, yes.
Just one question, and that's what I was gonna ask you. The water mains, that's, that's the ones that run to the laterals to the individual people's houses?
The water mains are, are our primary distribution system. Then the service, the services or the service laterals connect from the main to the house.
Okay.
That information is not in this summary. This is just the main.
So the 100-year replacement is just basically wear and tear of being underground for that many years?
Yeah, and, you know, a lot of times, you know, you'll have a slow and steady accumulation of a scale and things like that inside of a water main. So, you know, the pipe diameter will slowly shrink and slowly shrink. You may also have fluctuations in, in ground or in a particularly cold winter like we had in 2013, 2014, a significant number of breaks can occur. That's one of the criteria that we use for evaluating water main replacement projects is how many breaks have we been having?
And that was my question is, most of the breaks we have are in this, this setup? In the winter months?
Yeah, yes. We do occasionally have some breaks during non-winter months, primarily related to, you know, things like our valve exercising or hydrant flushing program. Because, you know, when you turn a valve off, it changes how the water flows through the pressure system. And that change versus, you know, kind of its normal system can cause a weak spot to finally break. Or another common occurrence is while the fire department is out battling a fire, you open up a hydrant and you start flowing 5,000 gallons a minute through a main, that change is the whole pressure dynamic trying to get that water there. It will oftentimes have breaks nearby to where they're fighting a fire because of that change in pressure. Or it could even be several miles away and, you know, just the way water has to flow through the system. So it's either the winter months with the cold or during, you know, some type of other event where we're exercising valves, flushing hydrants, or the fire department is using a lot of water. You know, that contributes to breaks on the system.
But flushing the hydrants is something that we have to do for maintenance purposes, correct?
Flushing the hydrants is something we do for maintenance purposes and also for water quality purposes. You know, in particular, if you're on a dead-end residential main, there's not a lot of usage. So you gotta get out there and flush those more often in order to maintain water quality. And it, it is also a requirement, you know, from the regulatory agencies that we flush the hydrant, flush hydrants and exercise valves on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you.
So as I mentioned, we don't have a, a way to visually inspect and rate, in particular, the water main system. With sanitary and storm sewer, we can at least do closed-circuit televising inspections. So one of the things we look at on the utility side is age of, of the infrastructure and how old is it? With the water main, because the Oshkosh Water Works was previously a private entity before the city took it over in, I believe it was the 1910s, there's not a lot of great records for a lot of the early water main. You can see that on, on page six with kind of the summary of when mains were installed. There's kind of a data gap that doesn't start picking up again until you get into the, you know, 40s and 50s when we start having good records on when those were installed.
You can assume that most of those unknowns are-
Most of those unknowns are probably, absolutely pre-World War II and probably pre-Great Depression and, you know, 20s.
They're 100 years old.
Generally speaking, yes.
As old as you and I are, Bill.
Together.
You know, so that's, you know, that's one of the criteria. But as I mentioned, water main break history is another significant criteria that we use when determining water main replacements. From the sanitary sewer side, again, we're getting a little bit less main in the collection system, about 200, a little under 270 miles. But again, you know, industry standard is about a 1% or 100-year replacement cycle. Our proposal for 2020 is about a mile and a half, so a little light on where we'd like to be. But we've got some very significant projects that are continuing, namely the Oregon Street Interceptor, which is a very large, very expensive project. So we, we can't afford to do as much work when we've got that major of a project going on. So again, a little bit of history in that summary document there as far as when the system was installed. You know, obviously a thing to keep in mind as we look at the sanitary and the storm sewer system, there was a time long ago where they were a single combined system discharging directly to the lake. So when that separation took place, some of those sewers stayed sanitary sewers, some of those sewers stayed storm sewers. But there is a lot of infrastructure in place that is 120-plus years old on both the sanitary and storm sewer side because of that previous combined system.
So we actually have wood in the system in some places?
Not, not so much wood, but there's a lot of clay pipe. Vitrified clay pipe was extremely common even into the 50s and 60s for gravity sewers.
Okay.
There is a lot of that in, in place and in the ground. From a soil corrosivity and reaction, the vitrified clay pipe was an excellent material because it didn't react. But it was a very brittle material. So if it wasn't handled properly during construction, one of the things we typically see in our televising reports are cracks at 12, 3, 6, and 9. That's, that's a good typical sign of a construction- That's, that's a good typical sign of a construction issue. You know, maybe the bedding was, the pipe wasn't supported properly and it, and if it tries to squish this way, you're gonna get those cracks at those quadrants. So, you know, that's a very typical failure that we see. Unfortunately, with that clay pipe, as it starts to do that, those pipe segments are only about two feet long. So then all of a sudden you start having pieces of that pipe falling in and that's where you start having blockages and other issues. So that's why in the last seven to eight years, we have significantly increased our closed circuit televising inspections of the sanitary sewer system. Streets Division does a lot of that work, but we also contract out some work as it relates to getting our capital improvements program done. So we can get more of that work done and be able to have a good visual indication of the system.
Especially when the telephone companies go through it.
That's usually the storm sewer, not usually the sanitary sewer. And I wouldn't have called out the telephone companies, the usual culprit is the gas company. We, we do find a lot of things, especially with the storm sewer, having a three to four foot bury depth, which other utilities like telecommunications and gas are usually in that three to four foot depth as well. So we do during our televising find a lot of utilities bored right straight through. And again, if it's a clay pipe, they're not even gonna notice it. Even a concrete pipe, they might notice a little hesitation on the boring rig, but not much, oh, I hit a rock. So that's one of the reasons about, almost 10 years ago, we implemented the televising requirement on working right of way permits. That they have to televise those, those utilities of ours before and after to make sure that they haven't accidentally bored through them. So this, similar summary for both sanitary and storm sewer, again, utilizing age as a, as an indicator and also televising. On the storm sewer side, we're at about 265 miles of pipe and we're proposing about two miles. So we're a little bit closer to our, kind of our goal of 1%.
James, in these charts, we also have the length of miles. And there's reference, okay, so on page 11, 10, I'm sorry, in that second table where it says lead on the first line.
Lead.
Lead.
That's okay.
Spell the same, pronounce differently, yes.
All right, lead and then private lead or is that private lead?
No, that's also lead. So an example of how we would code that in the GIS, a lead in the storm sewer is generally going to be a catch basin lead. So the piece of pipe from the catch basin to the manhole that ties, so that catch basin, that's the only thing on there, that's usually the lead. You know, prior to about five years ago, a lot of those inlet leads were not mapped in the GIS. So that's, that's a, a data gap that we're working on filling in. Private leads would be perhaps some larger storm lateral connections. So say you've got an eight acre parking lot and you got a 24 inch pipe coming out of your parking lot tying into our storm sewer. We're gonna map it and we're gonna code it as a private lead because it is a privately owned pipe. But it is a significant size that we want not only our staff, but other, you know, private utilities that when they're coming in and getting information from us about what's in the right of way. We want them to be aware of those pipes as they're doing their plans as well.
And then the stub, does that represent where things are in terms of at the curb stop or?
The stub, a lot of times, as we're completing one project and maybe setting up for a future project, we'll leave a short stub of pipe out of a manhole in, in various locations, knowing that, okay, we're gonna get to this and we're gonna continue on. So we'll leave, you know, a 20, 30 foot stub of pipe out maybe, so we don't have to go in and dig up that intersection again. We get clear of the intersection, we've got a pipe stub to connect to, so that we don't have to close down and re, you know, re-interfere with an intersection. Is the most common case where we've got stubs left in the ground. So again, these, the, all of this information, other than the private leads, is related to, you know, the main collection system and not to service laterals. So I just wanted to go over that, kind of some of that history a little bit with you, you know, because I had not gotten it to you before. The other two pages that you have, one's the data table and one is the graph. Jake, if you could pull up the graph for us, for the viewers watching on screen, please. This, this graph is a little bit, building a little bit upon the information we talked about during our previous budget workshop with the Pacer ratings. You know, this is, excuse me, taking a look at over the last 20 years worth of Pacer data that we have available. The blue bars is kind of that median condition where 50% of our roads are rated that score higher and 50% of our roads are rated less than that. So if we had 280 miles of streets, 140 of them, you know, let's pick 2018. 140 miles of those streets are gonna be at least a seven on the Pacer and 140 miles of them are gonna be a seven or less. So this kind of gives you a 20, little over 20 year history of where the, the Pacer rating has been. The red line is kind of an average condition. That is a calculated number based on the miles of the street, times the condition, add all those up and divide by the total miles of the street. So that kind of gives you an overall mean or average street condition. Again, it's going to be fairly close to the median condition. And then the orange, orange line is, you know, referring to the secondary axis on the right is, you know, kind of a miles of street surfaced in each year. So you can see we've had some pretty big years over the last 20 years and we've had some pretty low years over the last 20 years. The big peak in 2010, that included, you know, it was about 14 miles of streets. But that included a lot of DOT work in and around the interstates and also approximately four miles of Jackson Street that was asphalt overlaid as well. Because that is showing up as, you know, a street within our municipal boundary, so that shows up in all of the, the Pacer reports that we have.
So I mean, this really shows that, you know, just saying the last one, six years, we've really cut back on, on our miles. I mean, is that accurate?
Yes, we have.
So, and that, that's simply monetizing what we don't have?
Exactly. It's a matter of, you know, we don't have the funding to do, you know, the amount of streets that we were doing prior. You know, and I think, you know, the amount of streets that we were doing, you know, from about 2008, 2009 through about 2012. That was, that amount of work is kind of what got us to where we were with our debt limit. You know, and so that, you know, 2012, 13, that, I think, Mark, that pretty much coincides with where we put that 11.4 million dollar cap on the capital improvement program.
Talking like a finance director now, but that's, he's absolutely right.
So let's get to the rat killing. So what, what is the ideal, what's the ideal number in your mind, James? I mean, what, 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 how many miles is ideal in your mind, your personal mind?
My personal opinion, you know, we've got, you know, on average, you know, we've got streets that, you know, heavily utilized streets are probably gonna last about 40 or 50 years. Residential streets are probably gonna last closer to 100 years. So if we hit, said on average, we're gonna get about a 70 year life out of all of our streets, that's four miles a year. And growing because we're continuing to add street mileage.
Okay.
You know, so, you know, my target would be, you know, at least four. We can't hit that, so, you know, we continue to prioritize, you know, that's one of the reasons I've got Justin with me here tonight is, you know, when Justin's new role, kind of taking over that prioritization of street reconstruction projects and, and getting them into the CIP. And it also is a big factor of that is what streets are we doing? You know, Oregon and Snell next year are both gonna be fairly wide streets, 46 to 48 feet in width. We're not gonna do very much length of those kind of streets versus a 32 foot residential street. So that's, that's another key factor that, you know, we have to keep in mind.
And I, I think this is, this conversation is huge, especially for the people at home. But so i- if your ideal number is four and we're doing less than two next year, is that accurate?
That's what's proposed in the CIP. We'll get a little bit more out of the asphalt overlay program that Streets does, but, you know, that's maybe another half a mile at the most. And that's gonna be a short life, you know, we're gonna get maybe 10 years out of those streets. So that's maintenance activities, but that does show up in the GIS because it is a new, you know, it has been resurfaced, so it'll show up again.
So, and I'm gonna ask you a question you probably don't have the answer for, and I'm sorry, I'm not setting you up for failure here, but. So when, if we keep up this pace, when does the dust spiral start again? When, when do we have to, when do we have to do 12 miles and, and we can't afford to pay for it? Do you know what, do you know what that number is?
I have not tried to look forward and predict to that level.
Okay, and I, and I apologize, I didn't expect you to, I didn't expect you to know that number, but, but I, I see a problem building here.
Certainly, a, a, a key indicator for me is going to be, you know, we are in the process of completing the full city reevaluation of the street surface. The Pacer rating has to be done every other year and reported to the DOT and it's the odd years. Our consultant that's performing the work emailed us yesterday or the day before and said they've completed all the data gathering and are getting it all pulled together for us. So I, I will have a, a better idea on where things are looking from after I get that information.
The, go ahead, please.
But are we also seeing as we're having increasing numbers of winters where we have extreme fluctuation between temps that are ramping up the decline of some of those ratings?
Actually, some of the, the bigger issues that we've had have been a little bit less related to the, the cold and more related to rapid warmups in the spring.
That's what I mean, that extreme fluctuation.
Yeah, you get, that's where you see pavement explosions, if you will, or street buckling is when you get into, you know, kind of those extreme highs and, you know, some rapid changes that way. We've got a few streets that, you know, we, we certainly have to keep an eye on because we've had some issues with joint buckling in particular. But that's, that's almost more of an issue than I think the cold on the other side.
So my question is, are we seeing a trend with that increasing in terms of the lifespan or the Pacer rating?
Not that I've been able to identify at this point in time. I haven't taken a real in-depth look at it, but I haven't seen anything and I haven't heard a lot coming from either engineering or Streets Division saying, hey, we're seeing a significant uptick in this type of a failure.
One of the things, I think James was getting at it, the Pacer rating is a huge part of this. And, you know, the last few years, we had a, an, a median condition of eight in 2016. And the last couple of years, we've been doing Oregon Street. It was very necessary because of the sewer. But the Pacer rating of Oregon Street was.
It was about a four.
Yeah, it wasn't a three or a two or a one, so you don't get a massive amount of improvement, you know, now it's a 10.
Right.
But it was, it went from four to 10. It didn't go from one or two to 10. So as we, as Oregon Street sunsets and we start getting into, going back to some of the streets, Snell Road, for example, Snell Road is.
I believe that's a two.
Yeah, so we're, now we're going from two to 10.
So we're getting a bang for the buck.
We're getting a lot more bang for the buck, but we had to do Oregon Street and the more, we try to do the, you do the worst first. That, that's, that's absolutely what you do, but I think we're gonna get more life out of the roads that we're doing now because we're doing it comprehensively. And we're not digging it up years later because we fixed the sewer, but we just patched the street. Now, when we fix the sewer, we're fixing the street at the same time. So we'll, we'll get payback, but the indicator is, you know, you can see just doing like Oregon Street or one of those big streets, the median dipped a little bit. Is it directly because of Oregon? No, not directly, but.
But proportionally, yes.
Yeah, it's there. So, you know, you might see it's, hold its own with seven until we get Oregon done. But when Snell gets done, you're gonna get, you're gonna take a, a lot of mileage of two and up into 10. Then you're gonna see some movement.
Yeah, and, you know, as, as I mentioned, you know, when you're dealing with wider streets, you can't do as much length of a street. You know, if you're, if you got a 48 foot street versus a 32 foot street, that's a third again as much street. You know, if you're doing all residential streets, that's a third as much length you could do. You know, so there, there's some give and take there, but, you know, we can't ignore those arterial streets either because those are the ones that everybody drives on. You know, the, the local streets, you know, it's just the residents that drive on them, but we can't ignore those either because those need to be done. You know, we go back a couple of years and we had a significant length, you know, Bay Shore, Lake and Evoline. There was a lot of miles of street that got done there and, you know, it was all, you know, Bay Shore was 28 feet wide, you know, Evoline was, I think, only 30. You know, so there was a lot of residential miles that got done. So, you know, now, the last couple of years, we're doing, you know, arterial streets, so we can't get as much miles because we got a lot more width we gotta put on the ground. So there's gonna be some ebb and flow that way.
It doesn't look like we really start getting into any significant additions in mileage until 2022 when we're doing Algoma.
That might be a perfect segue, James, to, I don't know if that's what you wanted to do next, but.
Well, I think, you know, we, we've kind of hit and, you know, glossed over a few things, but, you know, I, I certainly don't wanna go through the book project by project. You know, so another one of the things I, I wanna point out and, you know, I'll pull up on the screen now is, you know, the interactive CIP dashboard. This, this is a tool that I believe last year was the first year we had this pulled together. So when you open it up, you can find this, and when you go to the city's homepage, you click on the government, pull down the capital improvements. That'll open up the capital improvements page and then certainly the 2020 to 2024, the interactive map and the preliminary CIP PDF are both there. But with the interactive map, you know, some of the things you can do, if you only wanna see what's in 2020, you can come in and you should be able to click these off. Oh, it's by selecting on which year you want. So if you just wanna see what's going on in 2020, you click on the 2020, you can see it kind of grays out all the rest of the years and just shows you the projects going in on 2020. If you wanna look at the, the concrete street replacement program over the five years, you can come over and just click on the concrete street replacement program. And that'll cycle out and filter out everything else, so then you can kind of see where all the projects are going on. And, yeah, if you wanna zoom in and look at them, you know, you mentioned Algoma Mayor, you can click on this. And then this'll bring up the details that are in the book. So the type of project, the year it's being done, you know, what's being proposed for that street, as well as all the project cost estimates, the street costs, the storm sewer costs, you know, all the various costs. So everything that's in your CIP book is right here on this interactive dashboard that you can click and view and look at, you know, various different ways to go about it. I haven't actually run the numbers on the overall street length, Justin, to see how much we're doing on a, a year by year basis. But certainly, as we mentioned with Oregon and Snell next year, those are both fairly wide streets. In 2021, we've got West Ninth Avenue from Oakwood Road to Linden Oaks. Again, that's going to be a fairly wide street. So that's, that's going to kind of limit some of it. Algoma is going to be probably a 36 foot wide street, so that does open us up to be able to do some more, some additional length. So if we wanted to look at, say you wanted to look at concrete streets in 20, should be able to turn, I think you can filter by more than one. I just can't get to that one.
That's a great tool.
It, it's, you know, rather than having to look at, you know, you know.
Piece of paper every other.
An inch thick book, you know, you can look at, you know, everything that we've got, you know, and you can filter and sort. You know, parks projects are showing up on here, whether we've got a storm sewer only project, you know, for example, you know, with the Snell Road project, we're also doing storm sewer down Main Street to be able to get the Snell Road drainage down to the new detention basin that was constructed a few years ago in front of Bemis. So we gotta, you know, be able to drain Snell to the detention basin, so we gotta do that storm project. So, you know, all of those various types of projects that you see in your book are all shown here on this interactive map and tool. And, you know, as you zoom and filter, you can see the project list over here on the side is filtering based on what you see on your screen.
But this is only for streets and utilities, right? We aren't able to see the same thing for parks or community development?
This has got, you know, so if we come in over here and zoom in on some of the park stuff, you know, there's, there's some projects here. You know, here's a Menominee Park Trail lighting project that shows up in here. So the interactive dashboard has a lot more than just the street projects. Sometimes it's difficult to try to be able to give a geographical location, like vehicles, those aren't in here. Because I can't really assign a geographical location to the vehicles. But if it's a project taking place at a city facility, it's showing up. So Grove, this is Grove Street Redevelopments, this is a TIF project, showing up in year 2024. So, you know, this has got all of those type of projects that you can see and look at in here.
As you can see from the lower left, the dollars, you know, a good portion of property improvement, concrete are the two largest and everything else kind of.
And, and the property improvements, you know, Mark, I'll be honest, the property improvement one is big here because of the Clearwell project at the water filtration plant.
Yep.
You know, that is over the course of the five years. You know, that is, over the course of the five-year CIP, $20 million worth of work. So that's why that number is where it's at. You know, if I were to pan that off the screen, you're gonna see, oh, property improvements dropped way down and the street project jumped up because we picked up Wagu Avenue, it looks like.
For some reason, I thought I saw the Grove Street Developments in 2020 and that said 2024.
Oh, there's two, or some, uh, uh, thank you for actually pointing that out, Mayor. And now when I click on it again, you can see up here it says one of two and two of two. So there's a couple of things, you gotta be a little bit careful on what you're selecting and looking at, but you can see there's a 2020 project, a 2021 project, and there might be some other ones here, a 2024 project. So there's multiple years worth of projects. If I were to zoom in a lot closer, you know, we're gonna see several different projects here that I can click on each of them individually.
Every time I look at this, I learn something new. It's like you just can't absorb all of it in one go-round.
It, it is, you know, this is, this is a tool that our previous GIS administrator, Adam Dorn, he did a lot of research for me on this. And he went out on the internet and found some examples of some things that other people were doing and, you know, true municipal government style, beg, borrow and steal from what our neighbors are doing and try to improve upon it. And Adam did an amazing job working on, on putting this together for me. And then, you know, our current staff have been able to continue it and update it as our future CIPs continue to go forward. So, like I said, I don't, I did not wanna get into a project-by-project discussion. If there's any specific questions anybody has, certainly Justin and I are here to answer those. You know, I don't know, Justin, if you wanna touch a little bit on, you know, just the evaluation that we go through with the streets and looking at, you know, the big picture of all the utilities, you know. Mark mentioned, we don't just pave a street without looking at the utilities anymore. We don't just, you know, replace a sewer without looking at everything, so if you wanna-
Yeah, so that's one of the things we've done here in the last several years, has gone through is when we're doing a water main project, we'll also look at the storm sewer and sanitary sewers to see, you know, how that looks so that we don't just do the water and pay over it. You know, we'll go through and do that pre-televising inspection of the laterals, the mains, you know, to verify. So some of our projects strictly driven for a watering project, but we'll have areas of sanitary sewer replacement as well. We're also looking at, you know, in a line item, and the CIP's always been the INI program. And that varies from whether it's sewer lining, manhole rehab, basically just to get clear water out of the sewer, sanitary sewer system. It's one of the things that we've done the last three years, we've been up on that north side for water main projects, I think.
Yes.
Um, in the area of Murdoch North. We're gonna be kinda coming back and looking at that area for lining projects in the very near future. Now that the streets have been paved, water main's done, sewer, any major issues have been taken care of, we're gonna look at aligning that to get, you know, uh-
Aligning the sanitary sewer.
Aligning the sanitary sewer to be able to get another, you know, 30, 40 years out of that, that system.
I did have a question on page 2020-5. So we have this listed as Congress Avenue Concrete Patching, but in the map and on our dashboard, it also shows Oshkosh Ave. So where's the cutoff and are we doing-
The, the cut, the, the street name change is at the river.
No, I mean the cutoff on this project.
We're doing some work on both sides of the river, this partially in conjunction with the DOT closing of that bridge for six months. The bridge approaches, the, or the approach slabs to the bridge are in very poor condition, so we're getting some of that concrete replaced. We've got some additional work that we're going to be doing on both sides of the bridge to just remove some failed concrete and, you know, extend the life through there.
We talked previously, because this was brought up before, it was much more impactful for us to piggyback on the state's contract than it was for us to try to do these extra things by ourselves.
They're closing the bridge, so I don't have to worry about traffic control. As it was, you know, when they had the week-long closure a couple of weeks ago, we had a sanitary or storm sewer manhole, storm sewer manhole that, you know, the adjusting raising completely failed and the casting was settling out. So Streets Division went out and while the bridge was closed for the DOT project between 7:00 and 3:00, they got out there one, one day, dug it, replaced, fixed the manhole, got the casting up, came back the next day and poured the concrete. And by the time the DOT was done, their Streets Division was done and gone. So, you know, we take advantage of those closures like that whenever we can. And this was a big one, you know, with the bridge being closed for six months, trying to get some additional work to, you know, smooth that right. Anyone who drives over that bridge on a regular basis knows it's, it's a rough ride getting up onto that bridge.
And that closure starts in December?
January. The DOT is opening bids on that project next week, is what I've heard.
James, on that Congress Ave, well, actually Be Oshkosh Ave side, are we doing any preliminary work for that intersection? Eventually, that intersection's gonna be reconfigured as part of the Rainbow Drive Master Plan and some other changes on Oshkosh Ave.
We're, we're not doing anything else in there. The Redevelopment Authority has acquired a couple of the properties on the north side of that intersection. Streets Division has assisted them with the demolitions in that area. So we're not doing other, any additional work in that area right now other than some patch work to get us through until such time as we are looking at completely reconstructing that intersection.
Okay, sounds good, thanks. James, anything with utilities? I mean, the Clearwell project is still-
The, the Clearwell project is the biggest one. We're, we're continuing to work through with DNR and Public Service Commission to get the appropriate approvals in place for that project. You know, we will have, excuse me, you know, we will be having some additional public information meetings as we are able to get that project moving forward again, and we'll have some more information coming for you at that time. We had a meeting with Public Service Commission staff about a month ago. We're working on a couple more things for them to, to send to them. So that one will continue to move forward as quickly as we can get it through the agencies.
Sanitary sewer-wise, you'll see the sewer continuing. We're reconstructing to the Glass Creek Bridge.
Reconstructing Oregon Street.
Oregon Street to the Glass Creek Bridge, but the interceptor will continue as a patch only from there south in the subsequent next one, two, you know, three, three years, all the way down to Ripple.
In, in the final phase of that work, from kinda 35th South to Ripple, that work is going to be done in conjunction with the Winnebago County project on Oregon Street or County Trunk Highway I. So kinda picking up from right in front of the Tech College where it goes from concrete to asphalt right now. The county is planning on reconstructing that down to Ripple. So we've been, they'd originally wanted to do it about three years ago and we said, well, we got this big sewer job, can you kinda hold off? So we've been working with them and we expect that project will probably be done together as a single project. We'll do the, it will bid it as a single project with the county and, you know, the sewer will go in and then they'll pave the street over the top. Because I, I've, as I've worked with the Highway Commissioner, I'm like, it really doesn't make a lot of sense for us to tear up the street and put the sewer in one year and then you to come back and shut the street down again the next year to pave it. Let's do this as a single project. So I've been working with the Highway Commissioner on that and trying to get the timing and keeping him informed of the status of the Oregon Street Sanitary Interceptor, which is one of the big reasons why we've continued to push so hard with that Oregon project is, one, trying to get the service down to the apartment complex and, two, trying to stay, you know, in conjunction with the county project so we can get that done as a single project.
James, is that gonna help our capacity along the frontage road, along 41 and everything too? I know there's some, some private developers have been-
Not immediately, in the long term. We've got some additional things that we're working on and then looking at in the short term to be able to try to improve that Washburn area. You know, that's kind of maybe just beyond the five-year plan right now, but we've continued to look at some evaluations and that. The long, long term for this is, yeah, this Oregon Street Interceptor, you know, long-term build out down to N over, over the 41 and 26 and come back up and pick up the stuff, you know, kinda the frontage roads down both sides, probably to about Ripple, if I remember.
Yeah.
Somewhere in that area. So the very long term, that's what this will do.
Okay.
The short term, this, you know, gets us a capacity so that that residential development at the corner of Ripple and Oregon can fully build out. They're kinda limited right now because of our capacity issue.
Sure, thank you.
Just a question about East Parkway Avenue Watershed Detention in the Stormwater.
Yes.
Page 11. So there's reference to an unacceptable level of flooding throughout the storm sewer system. Could you just be a little more specific there? I, for the last several years, drive that street regularly and talk to a couple of people and we're not really clear on what flooding is being referenced there as far as unacceptable level.
Well, as, as you may recall, a few years ago, we ended up do, paving Parkway Avenue was done in conjunction with Mount Vernon when a televising project identified some significant issues in that area. That, the storm sewer modeling that was done for that area took into account being able to convey stormwater out Parkway. There, there are some significantly, Chalen Streets, Grand, Oxford, Dale, they're very low elevationally and the design of the Parkway Avenue Storm Sewer System took into account building this dry detention basin in land that is currently owned by the railroad. One of the design criterias that we utilize for our storm sewer system is in a 10-year design storm, so 10% chance in any given year, there's no standing water on the street. And a 25-year design storm, 4% chance, driving, driving lanes are clear. 100-year storm, keep it in the right of way. You know, so that's, that's the design criterion that we've established for our storm sewer system and that modeling, and that's the criterion that we evaluate on all of our storm system models.
So it's more than just East Parkway, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Dale Ave, Oxford, Grand.
Yeah, you know, Parkway itself might not be flooding, but, you know-
Both side streets.
The, the side streets are even, you know, Grand, Oxford and Dale, I believe elevationally are actually lower than Parkway. So, you know, the flooding in that area, you're gonna see it first at the intersection of Grand and Oxford, which is the lowest point. And then it's gonna kinda build up from there. So you might not see it on Parkway, but the other streets are, are going to see it.
One of the things James has pointed out over the years when he was the stormwater engineer was, we have 120 different watersheds in the city. And, you know, you talk about Sawyer Creek, which is 10,000 acres and stuff like that. But in the older areas of the city, we have many different-
Five, 10 to 100 acres, you know. The Parkway watershed's probably about 125 acres. The Melvin Avenue watershed was about 100 acres, you know. So there's a lot of that size of watershed that, you know, there's not a lot of room to do much other than pipe work, you know, in Melvin, you know, that particular case, and we went the pump station route. In this case, in working with the railroad, you know, it looks like we can do something similar to what we did at Baldwin in New York and the railroad tracks and replicate that in this area to be able to provide that relief in that area.
And my whole point with that one was that it's good to ask those questions because you never know. Mother Nature works in mysterious ways. It may, it may not hit the area that you're hoping for. So asking what the benefiting areas for these ponds is very relevant because it can, it can vary from, from one block to the next, literally.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of, about a full third or more of our general obligation borrowing of the 12.5 million that's in here is devoted to streets. So obviously, the streets are, are the largest portion. Last year, we went from 11.5 to 12.5 in terms of our cap. That million dollars went strictly to streets. It was primarily due to inflation, the competitive nature. We were very fortunate and when James was showing you the chart about the earlier part of the decade, we were taking advantage of really good bid prices. We bought at the right time, we bought low. Now prices are a little high.
Oh, they're ridiculous. You talk to any contractor out there, I mean, the prices are through the roof, so.
So we're sort of dollar-cost averaging when you think about it, but we're, we're spending the same amount. But inflation-wise, we needed to do that extra million dollars. So maybe it's a little more than a third. And that's why when, when Russ was talking to council about the general capital improvement program, we have 12.5 borrowed in here. The model that Russ put together, looked at, looked at the possibility of 15. I'm not suggesting you commit all of it or, or any of it, but there are projects in the not-funded area. Some are streets, some are TIF, some are parks, there are so many different ones. I don't wanna leave tonight without, you know, advising council of that because we've talked a lot about, in, last week, we talked a lot about enhancement packages, but really, all we were talking about were operating enhancements. There are certainly a good number of street projects. You know, James is only showing you five, but I know from, from past discussions, the Engineering Division is literally going out 10 years. We're just not, you know, getting into the guts of it because to get into that is probably a little too detailed. But these guys are planning out 10 years.
Let me, let me ask you a question because I'm the new guy, so I'll apologize. But, so let's say we get halfway through the year, the budget looks pretty good. Can, how much time do you need to slam an additional project in?
To do a street project?
To, to do a street project, if it, if it's, if it's on the front burner. How much delight, I know you're laughing, you know what I mean, but it's just-
I, I mean, from, if we do not have any of the upfront work done, it's gonna take us six to eight months.
So, that doesn't help you.
What, what it would help is if we've got, say we, you know, say we have a situation where we have- Well, Bay Shore and Lake, we were fortunate, Lake was, Lake was relative, or Evoline. Evoline was not very complicated, but even still, you know, we kinda did that one a little bit on the fly. You know, maybe not, we didn't, certainly did not do all of the upfront work that we normally would do. We didn't do soil borings on Evoline that I remember. We didn't, well, we had done the televising by Streets Division and found the sanitors collapsed, the storms collapsed. You know, in the water main, we had to break history.
So it's a no, it's a no-brainer there.
Yeah, that, and, and we had great pricing, you know, with Bay Shore, you know, having been budgeted at 32, getting constructed at 28, we had enough savings, we could, we could get Lake Shore or we could get Evoline in, more or less. But to go through the full process, you know, if, if we had savings in the 2020, it would probably be carried over and an extra project thrown in 21.
So we are doing you a disservice if, 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 if we come along in July and, hey, the budget looks good, spending looks good. James, why don't you slam in some more miles?
There's a reason Justin doesn't have any hair, it's the last couple of years of that.
So is that what we do to you typically? I mean, is that-
Well, think about the arena. We did, we did South Main Street. Even to a certain degree, the Oshkosh Corp. project, that was never in our CIP. Suddenly, we were doing, you know, $7 million.
Which was a miracle, you guys did a great job, seriously.
And some of that stuff, we had known enough information early on, so the, it was a, let's go and be preemptive and do some of the survey and upfront work the fall before so that when it does go, Oshkosh Corp. does decide to, we, we go through and, you know, they, they get the golf horse, or the arena does go, we can kind of have that in the back pocket that we've already started that work.
I mean, I think that just goes to say how well-prepared you guys are. I mean, think about it, the arena project, the, the Oshkosh Corp. project, I mean, those were boom, boom, and you guys did a great job, so.
There's a lot of long days, but yes.
But so, so if, 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 if the stars align, July comes along, we've, we've, we've got, the budget looks good, we're, we're gonna benefit the taxpayers, so we can slam in a project, but it just, it stresses you guys.
It's, sorry.
I was just gonna say to Councilmember Miller's point, I mean, we do have these other items that you referenced that are projects not funded. What's not in the list of not funded is additional miles, right?
Additional streets, absolutely.
If we didn't do a number of these, perhaps we could put in for more miles.
Yeah, because, you know, middle of the year, if we're, if we say go on this street, I mean, that means we'd have to turn around, do the survey work, we're probably foregoing some of the, the soil borings, you know, pre-televising, maybe. But then to get a staff member, you know, in the office to be able to try to design that, we're putting it out to bid late in the year where you're trying to cram it in in this time of year where we're getting snow. So it, it does become very difficult when you're working on that type of timeline.
Well, we've had projects that were funded that didn't get done.
No, I, I just-
Or even started, so that money is a carryover, so. To your point, we could maybe, if that's the case, we carry something over and then we'll have some extra cash and extra care. You know, one example, in 2021, where we have $12.7 million in projects that are not funded at this point. One of them, for example, is the Ninth Avenue Extension east from Main Street. That's $3.5 million just by itself. Those are projects. Now, on next Tuesday, we're asking council to authorize us to apply for the Department of Transportation grants.
The multimodal local supplement, the MLS, thank you.
Say that really fast.
MLS. I had meant to bring that up. Thank you. You know, as council is aware, in the current biennial budget, the state authorized an additional $75 million worth of money to go to local units of government for transportation-related projects. That money was split up across townships, counties and cities and villages, each getting a piece of that pie. The city and village allocation after an earmark for Kakona Bridge is about 18, the cities and villages have 18 and a half million dollars that they're going to be, for lack of a better word, fighting over or competing over. So that is one of the things that, you know, as Mark mentioned, it's going to be a resolution on your agenda next week authorizing us to submit applications for that, for that pool of money to try and get some, some grant dollars to be able to offset some of our project costs. And you know, if, if we are successful in receiving some, that means that we may be able to turn around and add in another project. You know, and their plan is to, you know, they want to be, applications are due December 6th. You know, they've told everybody, you know, kind of, you know, they're hoping by early March to have the notices out. I think those review committees are going to be overloaded and I think they're going to struggle to get it by early March, but hopefully they do. Especially for people that are submitting 2020 projects, you know, one of the projects we're submitting is a 2020 project. I'm going to need to know by the middle of March, or I'm not going to be able to use that project. Because anything that we spend before getting the state municipal agreement approved is non-reimbursable.
So we have multiple projects. Some are funded and some aren't funded. We purposely do that so we can take advantage of whatever monies we do get. So we'll be working on that. Snell's one of them, but we also put Ninth in.
East and West Ninth.
That's correct. West Ninth, the one west of.
Oakwood.
Oakwood. So we don't exactly know and we're still learning, so we're trying to take advantage of that. But the idea is that we do have some street projects that are potentially impacted that, that we may want to look at. Either use our borrowing capacity. You've got buildings, you heard all the department heads. I don't, I don't need to repeat those. Those are there. I just, you know, just because they're in the book doesn't mean they're funded. I just, I didn't want that to be missed. And then also, you know, we've talked about some public building projects and the fact that we are projecting we may have as much as a $1 million fund balance. Can we apply some of that? Is, we could potentially use some of that as one-time monies. We don't want to, I think Russ is really leaning towards a 25% fund balance and we're, we're virtually there. So, you know, could we use some of that million dollars for other smaller property projects? Whether it's putting a, for lack of a better term, a down payment on one of these projects for 2021. The police department is finishing their facility study. There's still a little work left to be done over there and that could buy us a lot of time. Because FGM is going to be offering all these wonderful alternatives for you, expensive and less expensive. And I think Chief Smith is pretty realistic about, well, for this much money, I know we're, I mean, he, I think he recognizes, along with all the department heads. We can't get all these done, period. I mean, everybody understands that. Can we buy time with putting a small investment over in the building and then just making them good for a while? But you know, we've got a several, we got several projects. Training Center, I know Chief Stanley, is he here yet? Chief Stanley made a impassioned plea for the fire training center. We're going to work on the tower next year. But the training center is a, is something that we want to work on. Those are other things. So going up to 15, there's plenty of uses for it. The real question will be, you know, do we want to commit to that? And if so, where do we commit it to?
Well, I guess that, to your point, and just looking at 2020, page 46, you know, we spent the money to have the parks building study done. And we're not funding the renovation, which needs to be done. I mean, it was just, I mean, I don't even know if we totally decided, are we renovating the old building? Are we building a new building? I don't think that decision ever really got made. There's discussion of it and I think we got a estimate of what the cost of a new parks facility building is. But you know, the non-funded is now it looks like we made, somebody made the decision, we're going to renovate it. Or is that a Band-Aid for five to 10 years that we can afford to build a new one?
Why don't you come on up? We've got to transition anyway, so.
As he's coming up, if, if I can just actually just direct one thing to James, and it's not really a question, it's just going forward. So take a little step back. For example, in the comprehensive streets, utility improvements, I like how you give us the age of the current infrastructure. You know, for example, Oregon Street, we've got sanitary sewer from 1920, et cetera. If possible, going forward, it would be nice to know the age of the street that you are replacing as well. Not just the utility underneath, but just on this, on this document.
Yeah, I think what we've generally done, we've got the Pacer rating up at the top, but probably not the age.
If possible. If it's something that's in the database that you've already are including that stuff, if it's possible. It would be nice to know the last time we actually touched that street, just in general, when we're making those calls.
Yeah, because we have it for sanitary water and the storm utilities.
Yeah, so how old's the pavement?
Yeah.
And we ask about, you know, are we getting 70 years out of, you know, or are we getting 50? Are we getting that 100?
Yeah, in the case of Oregon, it's. It's, you know, the last time it was asphalt, completely asphalt overlaid was 24 years ago. So it was reconstruct, fully reconstructed in the mid 60s and it had a complete asphalt overlay done 24 years ago. So in the last 60 years, it's been done twice and now we're doing it again. So you know, that's, again, you know, it's, it is an extremely heavily utilized street. It is an extremely heavy traffic street, not only from a volume, but from a weight standpoint. That's why, you know, it is being reconstructed as a heavier pavement section now than it probably was previously as well. But you know, but yeah, that's something we could probably look at in the future. Because we do have that information available in the GIS, the same way this information's coming from.
I, I do think we're managing our data so much better. Whenever I have a question, you guys have the, I mean, the, right down to the second on this stuff. So I think, I think this data management and managing this information, the city's doing a great job of, so keep it up. I mean, it's, it's incredible how much data is there if you want to look.
Ray, there's some questions, maybe just nomenclature, because we do put renovation, but I think the idea was that this is about a new building.
Yeah, I think that's the direction that when we talked with council a couple of months back, it was a matter of about a million dollars between renovation and a complete new building. So I believe that was the direction we were headed. And the 250, 255, I think, that's unfunded, that's really phase one, purchasing the one property to the south of us. Because either way, we need to expand the footprint for building, storage and parking and so forth. So that's really step one is, is getting the ball rolling with that property acquisition. And I believe there's some design dollars in there, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, there's.
We probably misnamed it.
If you look at the not funded in 21 and 22, there's two years' worth of construction on that facility included in the not funded in 21 and 22.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So I think that's James' presentation.
Yeah, unless there's any further questions, you know, I.
Anything on major equipment? I know there's quite a bit of equipment for the street department. Anything that stands out that you're concerned?
I think we've covered.
We did most of that.
Vehicles. The only things we really didn't cover previously are property improvements. We talked about the Clearwells already. That's the big property improvement project with the water utility.
28th Lift Station, maybe?
I'm sorry?
28th Lift Station.
Yeah, I was just going to talk about that one, the 28th Avenue Lift Station. That's a part of an ongoing wastewater improvement project. So we've been talking a lot about the Oregon Street Interceptor. In 2020, we'll get that interceptor all the way down to 28th. We'll get a new sewer in 28th. We'll rebuild the 28th Avenue Lift Station Pump Station. That in turn will allow us to then reconstruct the sanitary sewer on Fond du Lac, Fond du Lac Road. And ultimately, we believe eliminate the Waukai Avenue Lift Station on East Waukau. So this started about six years ago with wanting to redo the Fond du Lac Road sewer. And then we took a closer look at our modeling and said, we can't do this project yet or we're going to flood somebody's basement about 12 blocks north of here. So that's what started the whole Oregon project was, you know, not only the providing service to the south side, but also not causing more problems along Fond du Lac Road and South Main Street. So that, that 28th Avenue project, you know, that's, we're in about the third year of the Oregon. But then it also get us over on the Fond du Lac Road and dealing with some challenges that the wastewater staff have on the Waukai Avenue Lift Station. So that's kind of the big property improvement stuff for, for those two facilities. Major equipment, you know, we're going to be doing some work at water filtration and the ozone system and then some chemical feed stuff at the wastewater plant.
I do have a question regarding a specific project. And so page, it's for 2020, page 34. It's the update relocation septic collar, street sweeper, the dump site.
Yes.
So, and this is always the one that catches, catches me that, that I always smile at. Because you see design first and then you'll see construction later, of course. And so we don't, at this point, unless you're looking very far forward, you don't appreciate the full cost of a project. So 2.5 million dollars over two years, period, to relocate the dump site. What, what am I going to get in terms of water quality and improvements to the system for 2.5 million for that? As compared to doing some other improvements somewhere else?
One of the big things that we're going to get right now is as we continue to move forward with phosphorus regulations at the wastewater treatment plant, we will be eliminating a source of phosphorus at the plant. You know, right now, the street sweepers, the jet vac trucks, all of those things dump at the, kind of the waste pits at wastewater treatment plant. So the street sweepers are dumping so that the material can de-water and then get scooped up and hauled out. Well, those street sweepings have tree leaves, seeds, all that stuff, is a significant source of phosphorus that the wastewater treatment plant staff have identified. So it is, you know, moving forward to try to manage our phosphorus costs as well. So that is, I think, one of the big components with trying to get this done. And at this point in time, we're, we're just working on getting the study started right now. You know, will that $2 million number change? Yeah, I think it's going to. You know, I'm hoping it goes down once we're able to get the study done and identify, okay, what's our best source? Where are we going to go with this and what are we going to do? At this point in time, we're getting some placeholders in place so that we don't forget a step along the way. But until we get the study done, which, you know, with some of the changes I had in the department this year, we're a little bit later getting started than I wanted to. But that's something that we're hoping to get started probably in January.
Anything else relative to CIP? I mean, there's.
Water Tower, Washburn Water Tower repainting. It says scored like a 90 out of 200.
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
Sorry, 2020, page 33.
Oh, okay. This, you'll see in a future year, I believe the Ferno Tower repainting is also in there. The towers need to be completely repainted both inside and outside in order to maintain the safety of our drinking water supply system. We do inspections on those where we'll drain the tower and we'll have a consultant go in and do a full inspection on the tower to identify any issues that need to be resolved. In addition to the complete repaint, this will also be adding a mixing system into the tower. We have a similar type of a system that was installed in the Marion Road Tower. So again, it's to help ma- make sure that, you know, we're not getting a separation of maybe some older water and newer water. We're continuing to keep that circular, circulated and mixed within the tower itself.
What do we repaint the inside with?
There's coating.
Special paint?
Yeah, it's, I, I don't know.
I'm guessing expensive paint, Mary.
I, I will be honest, I don't know the particulars of what it's painted with. But I mean, it is a steel structure, so you know, when water levels fluctuate, so I, I mean, you know, if it's not coated and painted, it's going to rust. You know, so that's, you know, we've, we've got to make sure we keep that in place. And you know, there, a lot of times there may have some welds they may need to touch up while they're in there as well. And that's what our regular inspections are telling us. So, but yeah, this is a complete interior and exterior repaint. The last time the exterior of this tower was painted was the early 90s.
It's usually about every 25, 30 years, you have to repaint your towers. It doesn't get a lot of points because, but the points it does get are basically mandate points. Lots of mandates for this. So even though it doesn't help necessarily economic development and we're not collaborating with other governmental entities and there's no grants. So it doesn't get a lot of points on that end, but on the mandate scale, it, it's off the charts. Hey, if.
Thanks, guys. Nice job.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go back to Parks Burn thing. You had mentioned there's, we have some capacity to fund a couple CIP projects that are not funded?
We budgeted 12.5 million dollars in borrowing. And that's consistent with council's direction from the prior year. I think Russ had pointed out in a previous presentation, some projections that assuming we continue to get growth and equalized value. I think what you used, Russ, a modest 1%.
Can you elaborate on that just for two minutes?
Sure. Basically, the city has looked at the percent of our legal debt limit. The state of Wisconsin limits your debt to 5% of your equalized value. And that determines a certain level that you can borrow. And then we have an internal policy and that policy is still being looked at by the Long Range Finance Committee. And actually, they're looking at modifications for that. Now I'm looking at the percent of debt limit that we're consuming. And what we're, where we're at is we're almost getting to about 50% of that debt limit. But the other component, the Long Range Finance is looking at, and I, I'm starting to take a look at, is how much of our levies is consumed by debt. And we're at about 40% and that's not real healthy.
No, it's not, right.
And so that and then the length of that. So those are some of the things the Long Range Finance is looking at as more of a comprehensive debt policy. Once Long Range Finance is done with that, I'll come to city council for their approval.
Okay.
What are you looking for?
I, I guess the only reason I keep asking about that, and it's kind of the same thing with the zoo improvements, is we do the studies. And we get the studies, we get the results and then we don't fund it. There's no sense spending 30, 40,000 dollars on a study if we can't do the project. We should know that going in, what, there should be some.
The threshold for paying for actually funding, I agree.
You know, because we got the studies sitting in the.
Because 10 years from now, I agree with you, 10 years from now, we're going to say, okay, let's do this. And somebody's going to say, well, let's do another study.
Yeah.
And just because it's been 10 years. So I, I, I agree with that.
That's a concern I have that, you know, we've done a couple of studies now and we haven't acted on the studies. And it's going to be the same thing, you know, with the fire department, the police department, same thing. We're going to get those studies back and all of a sudden, we're going to sit there and say, well, we have no money. Why do we even do the study and say we're going to try to improve our facilities, which is part of our strategic plan?
Well, I would, I would say that I think over the last six, seven years, I think we have, we have acted out of the studies. But prior to that, I know a lot of money was spent on the studies. They got shelved. So I think that's what we have to figure out, you know, moving forward with these studies, are we going to fund them? And then what is kind of our, you know, our limitation as far as.
Well, and I know we need some studies to apply for grants and things like that and we need to have plans and. Ray, is that accurate? I mean, we've got to have, we've got to have a master plan to apply for grants and things like that. Maybe you can address that a little bit because you probably do it the most.
Yeah, our comprehensive about the recreation plan is required to be updated every five years in order for us to qualify for DNR grant funding.
And then how much, how much have we gotten from the DNR over the last year? Just ballpark, I'm not going to hold you.
What we have been doing is we've been holding off applying for a lot of parks projects because Alan Davis and his staff with the Riverwalk. So we don't want to compete projects. So when you look at the, the dollars we got, you'd really want to look at Alan's figures for Riverwalk and other trail improvements.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
One of the other things with, you know, and I think Chief Stanley would say the same thing in terms of like the fire training facility. There are opportunities for grants with the fire training facility. Until you put it in the plan, it's awfully difficult to make the case. You know, to Councilmember Allison Osby's point, we've talked about, we've had plans. One of the ones, and Bill, we had this conversation the other day. There was some criticism about our public works garage being, you know, argued to be over budget. Well, that was because we've only been planning it for 25 years. And, and after a while, you know, the, the estimate that was originally put together was put together, I believe it was 2007, the year before I even arrived. We didn't cut the ribbon on that thing until 2013. So the impression was that it went over budget. Well, the reality was, is we had to, we had to take a. went over budget. Well, the reality was, is we had to, we had to take a dose of this project at a time. And the inflation of those projects, two thousand, two thousand and seven dollars weren't the same as two thousand and eleven, twelve, and thirteen, which is really when we constructed it. So there's this impression, well, it costs more. Well, it did cost more. And if we have any of these projects, like the parks building, if we say, well, let's defer it for two or three years, you're at an inflation factor and it'll just, it'll just get worse. And that's not saying you got to do all of them because you know you can't do all of them. But can you put them in order? Can you program them in using what Russ is talking, oh, good timing. We were trying to get to that.
Appreciate it. This is exactly what I was looking for. And I don't want to stop the conversation, but it has to do with debt management. And that's what we're on. And we've already hit the sixty percent mark.
Right. So this is the history up above. So we're starting back in two thousand and fourteen, going down to two thousand and nineteen.
Russ, let me interrupt you for a second. For everybody at home that's watching this, this is what this previous councils and staff has done to reduce the general debt, the general fund debt. Is that, is that accurate?
Right. And the key measurement is this last column, the percentage of debt limit used. The city council, and I think in working with our policy, we want to try to get this to half, fifty percent. With these assumptions and the blue bar, and we talked to the long range finance, is the estimated equalized value for two thousand and nineteen. But the yellow bar and the equalized values are projections going forward and assuming one percent. Long range finance said, okay, what happens if we get zero growth, whatever? We can, we could change these parameters. But what I wanted to say is by two thousand and twenty-nine, we, based on these assumptions, we can be under fifty percent. This, this schedule shows a potential placeholder in two thousand and twenty of even sixteen million dollars. And we still meet that parameter, that goal. And we can change that number to fifteen or whatever.
Or thirteen five.
Or thirteen five, or leave it at twelve five.
Right, right.
But the point of the matter was if something popped up, and I think this last iteration, we said, okay, what happens if we did something more in two thousand and twenty, maybe scaled back in twenty-one and twenty-two, and then went back to fifteen million dollars each year of new debt. This assumes the amount of debt that comes off the books, and some of these columns are hidden. But we also account for the debt that's retiring.
And I think if there's anything that we do here tonight, it is to continue, I think this is the most valuable thing that this council can do, again, my personal opinion, but is continue this process of reducing the debt so that interest money can go to other things and taking, taking the cost of this debt off the levy. I mean, this, this is the biggest thing we can do for the citizens at home. Did I segue in for you? I mean.
You certainly did.
All right, I'll shut up.
Because one of the other debt measurement tools that we're going to talk about next week at long range finance is this number here. How much of our debt, how much of our total levies devoted to debt? And twenty-nine, even, you know, twenty-nine, thirty percent is pretty healthy. It was worse in thirteen to fifteen. We were, half of our levy was going towards debt. So the city council's done a good job. As a finance director, I'd like to see this lower than that. And I think.
As would I.
So the draft policy that's being considered next week has twenty-five percent, but we're not meeting twenty-five percent. But and that's, that's a key component that I think Moody's and other rating agencies will take a look at. And that's why we want to develop this long range policy to help make decisions.
I thought in the very first presentation at the beginning, that it was shown as forty percent.
That is forty percent of our debt limit.
Our limit.
Because the debt limit is five percent of your equalized value. And so you want to have a healthy, and you could do whatever you want. Some communities say we want to be at sixty percent. Some communities say you want to be at thirty percent. It's, what is your tolerance of issuing debt?
But I think for the people at home to understand that right now, twenty, is it twenty-nine percent, twenty-nine percent of their dollar that they give us, twenty-nine percent goes to pay for debt. It goes right down the toilet. So I mean, it's, it's, it's a third of the money that you give this city council and the city goes right down the toilet. And that, that's one thing that we got to work on.
You could use that term, but I wouldn't use that because.
It's for improvement.
It's for improvements, but the key, the key to remember is when we're financing capital projects and we're financing projects in two thousand and twenty, it's really for the benefit of future generations. And so what you're doing is you're spreading the cost of the benefit, whether it's streets, water and sewer today, for future benefit. And those future property owners are paying for it. You're making a pledge whenever you issue debt, to issue a levy to offset and retire that debt in the future. And that is then out of the current city council's control. But it's not, I would argue it's not flushing it down the toilet. I'm arguing that it really is an allocation.
It's definitely dropping to the kids and the grandkids.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's an allocation.
But in this case, arguably, the kids and the grandkids are the true beneficiaries because the street project, the street will last for forty, fifty years.
So one of the reasons for bringing this up, because, because Councilmember Herman's question is, you know, do we have capacity or, you know, do we have room for debt? Yes, we've got room for debt. I'm not going to advocate for taking on more debt. I would like to see us have less debt as well. However, in the interest of also being, trying to be extremely fiscally responsible, the cost of debt right now is good. This is probably some of the lowest interest rates we are going to see for a long time in terms of taking on new debt. So in terms of if we are looking at a six million dollar project in two years, or we do not know interest rates in two years, we have capacity to take on debt to bank for future projects if we were interested in doing that. I won't advocate for that, but we do have that capacity. Or even just for funding additional improvement projects at the moment, whether it's, you know, a half million for, you know, or two hundred, you know, a quarter million dollars for a park, for the park department acquisition, or, you know, some, the museum has some requests. There is capacity.
Because the other thing that we have to factor in as well, and that's exactly what I was going to say, Councilmember Muggerhour, is, you know, because we don't have a crystal ball and we can't predict the future, is, again, part of the reason that we were disciplined and we initiated was so that we could bring it down. You know, and of course, you know, once you start to bring it down, there's kind of the urge to want to take out more and complete more projects. To Mr. Muggerhour's point, interest rates are the lowest they've been in, I don't even know how long. And if interest rates rise, of course, the projects then cost more. The other thing to consider too, is that, you know, typically these bonds are twenty-year bonds. And when you bond out a project, you, they're not callable. You can't call them back or refinance them for typically five to seven years, typically.
Usually when you do the issuance date, you look at the callable feature. And again, the sooner you have the callable future, the more the investor is going to want for return. But yeah.
Exactly. So, I mean, those are all factors to consider. And that's, I think, the really hard part for long range finance or for councils to know which is necessarily the correct decision to go or direction to go right now.
What, I put this model together, actually with the help of Ellers. And, and the whole point of it was to say, okay, are we on target? And based on these various assumptions, and we could go back and make the zero percent to get this at fifty percent or less. And that was the long range target.
And it's always going to be moving. Every year, we're going to have a new number to insert. And originally, originally, our goal was to get to seventy percent by two thousand and twenty. So the fact that we've gotten the sixty percent by two thousand and twenty is, is kudos to council for saying we need to, we need to tighten our belt. And that's a result.
And it's been difficult for staff department, for everybody, because we went from spending, what, nineteen million back, eighteen, seventeen, nineteen million, twenty-seven million.
Some of that's refi.
Some of this is refi.
Some of that was refi.
But, you know, like new debt, I mean, was quite high for somewhat. So for us to come back and say eleven-two or eleven-four is, is the max was very tough.
And we bought fewer miles of streets. I mean, those are, those are the trade-offs that we did. And obviously, there's, there's genuine interest. We'd like to do more streets. And that's because we still have a lot of work to do.
So if we go up to, go back there once, please. So in two thousand and twenty, if we were up to sixteen million, that extra million would give us, I think I asked Mr. Robbie earlier, just in street reconstruction, maybe on a residential street, did you say maybe half a mile-ish?
So a million bucks doesn't get much, is what you're saying, James?
Makes you feel all warm and fuzzy.
But the idea is we're going to have to keep monitoring this because to get to fifty percent, and I, I see ultimately the council's going to be in that general landing spot for the end of the next decade. So throughout the whole decade, if we have a bad year on equalized value, that's going, it may go up. I mean, it's, but it might.
Right.
We have to be prepared for those things. See, bad year. That would not be.
That was one too many zeros.
Yeah, one too many zeros. But you can see, if you start, you play around with it. And depending on what happens to the equalized value, this is a really interesting, you know.
It's my favorite tool. Absolutely.
Say, what happens? What if? So those are all.
So even if the equalized value stayed the same from nineteen all the way up to two thousand and twenty-nine, you can see, instead of being under fifty percent, we'd still be at fifty-five percent. That's assuming no growth in equalized value.
And part of the thing that I think is important to point out is, if you go back to the top of the chart, Russ, when we started doing this analysis, when council gave us direction, our net, our net debt was a hundred and forty-seven million. We've dropped it by twenty million in six years. That's, that's good. That, I mean, that's, we've made a dent.
Retired more than we're taking on.
What's the difference in what we would have in interest at the sixteen million versus the twelve-five?
Oh, that's a good question. You know, at that, I would have to probably talk to the folks at Ellers because I'm, I'm a finance director, but I, and I don't have a crystal ball. If I did, I'd be probably in New York or someplace else and, and making more money. I don't have the crystal ball to tell you what's going to go along with the interest rates. But we can find out what the interest rates are now and work it out.
That's what I'm saying, for, for what we're dealing with right now.
I don't have the interest rate in here. This was an exercise to look at how much debt's coming off the books, how much debt we're adding onto the books. We did have, we did have a chart put together that showed our impact of our existing debt on the levy. It might take me a few minutes to find that. But Ellers did say, you know, we have our existing debt and how much tax levy is being pledged for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. So we have that, but I don't have the interest cost.
I'm guessing it's around one-six-five. Wasn't that the last?
It's a lesson two.
So I think the last chunk we refinanced, I thought was like one-six-five. That's just what.
I generally, I like to look at the larger indicators, especially for our discussion. The fact that we're committing thirty percent of our levy for debt, regardless of, even if you agree with Russ's approach that future generations should be paying for a portion of that, that's still a high number.
Absolutely.
Regardless. And so that thirty percent, we need to get it down.
Nobody, nobody could run a business based on that number. And I understand you can't always look, like, you can't always run the city's business.
But that's still, that's still too much under any circumstances. So we, we need to get that down. But we have the need. So it's, you know, I talked about favorable economic conditions. All that means is if our equalized value continues to go up, we may have a little more capacity. But if our equalized value doesn't go up, then we have to, we have to pull back. We may have to say we, we got to drop this project, you know, or whatever. What I'd, I'd like some general direction in terms of what your comfort zone is for borrowing. But long range finance is going to weigh in eventually. But for, for two thousand and twenty, what do you want to go at? And then which projects do you think? I mean, we, we talked, I mean, we're going to have a great discussion on enhancements, but you gave us really good direction last week. We're halfway there. I mean, you've got a handful of things to decide. All the departments are here, ready to talk about them. But the CIP, you know, where are we going to go? And what projects would you like to see, if any? And I'm not, I'm just, I need a landing spot so that we have a number that we can start working off of. All, these are all great ideas. It's just that we can only pick so many.
Well, and keeping in mind, we stay with the strategic plan of the long range finance committee and so.
So the CIP you have before you right now has a landing spot of twelve-five for debt for two thousand and twenty.
And there's what, seven not funded in two thousand and twenty on the, that you have suggested.
And I would strongly encourage you to take a look at two thousand and twenty-one because it's twelve point seven million. And there's no way you're going to become close. So you really need to take a, a long look at that, at both twenty and twenty-one. So it, I don't want it to get lost because now some of them go with it. I mean, Steiger Ring, for example, the expansion renovation in two thousand and twenty is only the construction document. Now you can, the advantage of getting a construction project done, or the documents done, is you put them on the shelf and you got them. So that if things do improve, you know, the thing you asked James about.
Right.
Lot, lot more lead time.
Right.
If you've got the plans on the shelf and there's funds, you can pull it off and start the bidding process. Same thing with these other ones.
So I guess a question I have is Mr. Herman had brought up about the Parks Department. You know, because we talked about a new building, now we have renovations. Did we ever get that question answered?
It is a full new building.
It's a new.
Oh, okay.
Apparently, it's a new building, though.
We, we misnomered it, or misnamed it with a, calling it renovation.
I just want to ask this question again. And it may have come up during the workshop. And that was a number of years back, there were some plans that were done and some architectural drawings, from what I understand, of the senior center north building that didn't happen. Maybe Mr. Maurer can talk a little bit more about what that entailed. Is there, council doesn't go this direction with this new building, is there an opportunity for something maybe not quite as extensive in relation to that space in the senior center north building? For the Riverside expansion? And I don't know, I've never seen the drawings. I just heard about them.
So are you suggesting, you're not suggesting putting the parks over there, the administrative side, but doing renovation of the senior center as was in that plan?
In, no, for the parks coming together in that potential space.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the measurements, but I don't think that has enough room for us and for what we need just for parks. Plus, then you're taking away with the senior center future expansion would also need. So, you know, the Polisha that's there, they had some plans for expanding fitness, which we've done internally right now. But I think, you know, as we know, the senior population is going to continue to grow. So we need to make sure we, I think we have to keep that space for the senior center expansion as well. And I don't think there's enough room for us, parks going over there as well.
I don't remember, did FGM have, I know they had the renovation alternative, but it was only a little bit different in cost. But was there a different scale in terms of the new building as kind of a plan B? Maybe somebody else can refresh my memory from that workshop. Can you, can you? So in other words.
I don't know what you're asking.
Here, we're talking about the full rebuild, or full new building.
At about six million was the estimate, correct?
Right. Okay. For how many square feet? Was there a plan B for something a little less costly for the full new building?
There wasn't. I don't think we got that far into any design type. They took a look at what we had worked on years ago when the central garage was being constructed, when we took a look at what do we need for future growth, building storage, vehicle storage, administrative staff. So that's what they were working off of based on the most recent study as well.
And I don't remember, I'm just going off my memory, which is getting worse as I age. I don't remember.
Tor your looks.
Department building being brought across the street to the senior center. No, that wasn't.
No, I had asked about, there were some other design.
There was designed to expand the senior center.
And that's in the, it's in your five-year CIP. It's those projects that continue to get moved back because of the funding issue, really.
But the drawings were not necessarily done by like an FGM. They were very, very conceptual by, by members of, I think, the senior center board.
No, actually, we had dimension four, a firm hired for that when Mr. Zeeber was here.
That's, that's what I was, I remember the name of.
But they were very conceptual.
It was, yes.
And, and I, and I would agree with Ray. We want to make sure that we have capacity for the senior center to grow. Even if we don't have the money today, got to have that. At the point, there was a lot of optimism, but the fundraising, you know, arm of the senior center is, is limited. And so it's going to, it'll ultimately be, there might be some grants. be some grants, there might be a little fundraising, but ultimately, it'll, it'll rest upon the council to ultimately provide the funding.
So in terms of CIP stuff in front of us and moving.
We're 12 and a half.
And moving this along at a good pace, I think that there's, there's two options, at least in, in my mind. One, we have a discussion of, are we interested in more debt than 12.5? And if we're not, then the discussion doesn't go very far. Or you talk particular projects and yes or no particular projects until you get to a point where nobody's got a stomach for any more money.
I'm, I'm good at 12.5 if you want to take a poll here, so.
12.5.
12.5. There's four. Discussion's over.
Yep.
Move on? That's cleared up. Yeah, I guess the, the only other, this last parting thought is, you know, we can leave the CIP at 12.5. You're going to have to adopt a preliminary authorization for debt issuance if something changes between now and then. Or if you had, like, if you, you are comfortable at 12.5 or 15 or some other number, you know, if we, we could always come back with the potential projects in that gap. But it sounds like 12.5 is the number, and it sounds like a good direction.
So I guess my only question would be, is, you know, when it comes to the Parks Department billing, because obviously, you know, I'm assuming that's money that would be then banked, correct? Towards that project?
Generally, what we would do is bid it out, like, mid-year, and then carry it over to the following year, because effectively, you'd make a two-year commitment to get it done. 3 million in year one, 3 million in year two, that would get the 6 million. So that, and we'd, we'd probably do it mid-year. You wouldn't spend all of it by mid, by the end of the year, and then you'd have the other 3 million to replenish.
I mean, if we can't even fund 250,000, are we going to fund 6 million?
I guess, I mean, because that.
So we might as well say, we're not going to rehab, we're going to have to figure out how to rehab what we got.
I guess that's my point, is that with this in particular, are we saying no, we're not doing it?
Basically, we are.
Are we saying no, not right now? Or are we saying this is an exception to say, we need to start the process? Because that's, I think, the bigger discussion. And I don't, and I don't think we've had it yet.
Hold on a second, though. Which TIFs are soonest to be potentially closed with a potential positive outcome?
Nothing too substantive.
Nothing, yeah. That, that's very few and not a lot. And we've been, we've been taking the money and putting it in the residual.
Right.
We've been putting the residual in the, in the Great Neighborhoods Fund. That's not written in stone or anything, but it's not a lot. You know, we can certainly have that visit. Maybe one of the other things I can throw out, if, if council wants to stay at 12.5, you know, I did mention, you know, by year-end, I think we're going to have a significant surplus for the year. We could come back to council, report on that, and then council could maybe make some decisions if they wanted to commit any of those funds. Anything that you do to put something on the shelf is, as long as you follow through with it eventually.
Right.
You know, if you let it sit for 10 years, you've wasted your money. If you let it sit three, four years, you still have some potential value with it.
That was actually, my next comment was, I would be supportive of trying to use some of those excess funds from this year in terms of the parks, the first part of the parks, to get that kick-started.
And, and I would agree with that, but I, I want to be clear, what we're talking about is, is we're going to use cash, not post-dating a check, you know, it, you know, so September, October, you come to us and say, hey, things, things look good. We've got, we've got cash.
I'm suggesting January, February, once Russ and Jennifer close the, preliminary close the books.
19.
If we have a million-dollar surplus.
Right.
No extra borrowing, we got a million more, and I think long-range finance is going to have to take a look and say, what do we really want for a fund balance? If 25% is the new floor, we may have a million dollars. Now, there are projects here that can be looked at. And I did mention, you know, like, the, the chief is, is said, look, I know the realities. We may never be able to do, at least in our, you know, 10, 20-year timeframe.
Right.
So do you do something like that to, to buy them time? Do you put the, the parks building design, get it, you got it on the shelf? Get Steigerwing on the shelf. Get, get those ready so that when and if you have some.
Shovel-ready.
Shovel-ready is probably a good way to put it. Once, and then, next year, we're having the same discussion, which we will, how's, how's the economy doing? Where's our equalized value? We've got these things on the shelf. Can we take them off the shelf now? And which ones? Do we do parks? Do we do museums?
Or do we buy down special assessments?
Those are all the options. But, but again, every time you add another, you know, idea there, it's like, all right, we could, we could freeze ourselves and, you know, just not do anything. So there are, I mean, I think council member, Deputy Mayor Herman pointed it out, we got a lot of project studies that we've done, you know, at a certain point.
Better collecting than us.
Yeah. And, and, and I think council was, we want to know where we stand on these things. We got a pretty good idea. We've got a lot of needs, to be sure, but we don't have unlimited resources to do it.
To Councilmember Allison Osby's point, though, this particular one that's in front of us, Parks, it's an important one. And so we haven't had the discussion at this level of, is this something we are going to move forward with or not? And whether it's right now at this table, or it's in the future, that discussion needs to be had, because that will determine a lot of what we try to do in the future. And so I don't know if you want to have it now, because it's still part of this, and we can talk about it, but we should. It is important, and it should get done.
I thought, well, to your point, Councilmember Moore, I thought in the direction to the city manager, we kind of said we wanted, like, a five-year plan to get it into the CIP in the next five years. Well, here's phase one. It's going to have to go in phases.
Yeah, I don't remember.
So I thought we kind of had that discussion that we were moving forward, moving forward with.
I think we started it, but I don't know that we ever finished it, and I don't even, I don't know that we established a specific timeframe.
I think we said we were going to wait until we saw how this came out and what we were going to do with borrowing before we would make that decision.
The five-year, I, I remember clearly, because you gave it to me as an annual goal, was police and fire. That was, that was clear. But with parks, I think it was, well, we'll just, you know, see how it looks in the CIP. You know, what's our, we talked about favorable economic conditions. Favorable economic conditions is that column that says equalized value. That's really what that means. And, you know, we can keep an eye on how equalized value moves.
Just, I, I guess I, I do want to hedge just a little here. Someone mentioned earlier that favorable economic conditions also meant if this were a year where it was less expensive to borrow more, it would be the year to do it. I don't know if we want to go back. I, I guess I'm open to going back and saying, maybe we do nudge this year because it would cost less and likely not have that lower rate going in the next couple of years.
Well, and they're talking about the feds cutting the rates again, potentially.
Well, I, I don't.
My timeless would be.
That doesn't necessarily, the Fed cutting the rates doesn't necessarily flow penny for penny down, down to what we're issuing bonds for. So I, so.
Yes and no.
So.
So I guess the point is, they're not going up anytime soon. Usually, if the Fed cuts right, it indicates of where bond pricing and the expense is. So moving forward, again, that's what we have to decide. Are, are we going to do the project? Or are we going to leave Mr. Maurer and his staff and that area in the building that they're in, and we're going to commit to that for the next 10 years? Or are we going to take a look at it and say, we need to do something kind of like we did with Public Works? We need to make the decision. Are we going to move forward? Are we not going to move forward? And then from there, I think how much we borrow and win, I think then depend, that gives us then something that hopefully, you know, our finance director will be able to help advise us on.
The mayor made a point, and, and the favorable economic conditions is more than, it's not just one-dimensional. I, I was overly simplifying. The third factor, it's, it's borrowing rates, and it's also bidding rates, or bidding prices. Right now, it's not the greatest, to be honest, and that's.
Well, it's terrible.
Nobody wants to hear that, because everybody wants to get their projects done. But getting the, getting the construction documents on the shelf gives you the ability to be more nimble if construction.
And I think we're going to have a hiccup in the next 18 months. And I think, I, I, a lot could change with next year's presidential election.
I remember former, former council member Kevin McGee spoke at UWO a couple of years ago, and it was, and he, it was a backhanded compliment to the city. It was really more of a, it was, the city started reinvesting in its facilities and its infrastructure at the perfect time. It was 2010. The, the rates were at their lowest, and so were the bids. And we did a lot of good stuff. I mean, James remembers all the Public Works projects, the stormwater projects that we were getting done at literally 20 cents on the dollar. We were getting some things done. It's not that we want to hope for some bad luck, but we get things on the shelf, we can take advantage of that and buy, and buy low.
Ray, did I see a price in here for your plans? Did I, is there a dollar?
That's on page 2020-28.
250, yes. That's part of the quarter million, along with the acquisition of additional land.
That's, okay, so that's, so it's the 255?
250, yeah.
Okay.
46.
But then if you look in the following CIP for 2021, it's 3 million bucks that's not in the CIP. If you commit to this, you almost have to commit to.
Well, I, I think, I think what I'm hearing, and everybody jumped in here, but I, I think everybody, I think everybody's kind of on the same page here. But I, I don't know biting it off in, 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 in three years is, is, is what we want to do either. I, I mean, is that, is that accurate? Or, or is there an appetite to swallow it in three years?
Is that what you're trying to show, Russ? I'm just asking.
He's looking at your numbers. I'm letting you talk, but all I did was, I assumed that 12.5 was a, a constant, but I added 3 million extra in '21 and '22. And then, again, this doesn't get to the interest costs. This just gets to the amount of debt outstanding. And if, if future councils want to honor the 2, 12 million five and stick to it, with the exception of those two years, if you're looking at the percent of debt limit, we get down to below 50% in 2025, and we're at 43% by 2029. I'm just trying to show you what that additional $6 million would mean.
Right.
And I could make it any way you want it.
But before we spend the $6 million, there's a few more guys that want to kick at the cat back there. So I mean.
Oh, yeah. And it's, and it's on.
It's endless. So.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I mean.
It's about making it a priority or not.
Right. It, it, that's exactly what it is. So I mean, where, Mark, where does it sit in your priority list?
Well, I, I've, I've said that the Parks building is the number-one public building priority. Public building. You know, you know, you can say, I think streets are more important, and, and council has absolutely, that's.
Right.
That's your, that's not just your responsibility. That's your job, to make those priorities. But as far as public buildings go, that's, that's the number one. We're not, you know, I know the efficiency that James and his staff have gained from the Public Works Field Ops facility. You know, I think Kevin Ewen had said, our folks are out the door 20 to 25 minutes earlier every single day. So.
Ray, do we have to jockey a lot of equipment in the morning? I mean, that's probably the big, so you know what I'm saying? Like.
Yeah, on a day like today with the snowfall, if, if we don't have our staff when they come in last night, getting things staged to go out the door, or if we have a storm call and not expected, Bill and his forestry guys, it could take them an extra hour to get the equipment, necessary equipment in and out, or it's behind the shed, or because it wasn't stored indoors. So it's, it's one of the biggest challenges, is getting staff, like Mark said, getting them in and out efficiently.
And we'll be, you know, and you look at the equipment that is in the CIP that's approved this year for parks. And we just added 70 more acres of parkland that they have to maintain. Were you talking about that?
He's got a half million dollar of equipment in there, though, so I, I don't feel too bad for Ray at the moment. I'll be honest.
We have a 1965 forklift, so.
Solid forklift, yeah. So I don't feel too, too bad for him. But, no, you're right. It's, it's limited funding, and it's about prioritization.
Right. It's about priorities, you know?
And sometimes the sun shines on a particular department a different time each cycle. So, you know?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that's, and, and the department heads, I can't tell you how proud I am of them getting it. That there, there are times when, hey, we got to put emphasis on this. We got to put emphasis on that. We put emphasis years ago on the Public Works Garage. We put emphasis on stormwater improvements. We sat not spending money. We, we had money, and we didn't do it. We had, we had $10 million in unspent cash when I got here in 2008. So I, why aren't we doing these projects? We have the money. The council said, we got to get started on these things. And everybody understands that their, their time comes. Putting projects on the shelf makes sense. Even if you tell me 12.5 is the number we want to stay with for this year, you know, we can come back and say, here, here are extra funds we have. And, you know, and I, and I think we need to talk about some of those. You're going to have to revisit some of the facility studies. But Ray's facility study isn't going to change. It's, it is, it is what it is, and it's, it reflects the needs of, of a department that has been in a 60-year-old building for long, too long.
Which wasn't designed for municipal function, basically.
Yeah. It was great for the tech.
Well, let me ask this. I already took one poll. I'll take a second one. It's going to be two parts. One, is the Parks Department building and that construction, reconstruction, a new building, is it important to each council member?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. I say yes as well. So if it's important, then we have to find a way to fund it. And now, now it's a matter of, is it now or is it later?
Is it important, though, is it, it's not a black and white. Is it important in the span of the other things unfunded?
When you ask, when you answer the question, I hope you're taking that into account. It should, it should go unsaid that.
Well, I think, I think, I think Mark summed it up. It's the number-one priority for him. So I mean.
For public buildings.
Public buildings.
If it is a priority, and you're interested in moving forward with it, are you interested in moving forward with it now or in two or three years? And if you're interested in moving forward with it now, a quarter million dollars is what starts it. And whether that's debt that we just talked about, that you didn't want to go over 12.5, or we're using 250,000 of surplus revenue from, we, we overtaxed and we underspent. Thank you for underspending, everybody. Appreciate that. But we overtaxed and underspent, or we took out extra debt that we didn't need to take out. And that's the money that's sitting there. So we have funding there if we would like to start the process on this important project.
But we've also had year after year, the citizen survey that comes back, and all of us have heard these calls, seen the emails, that we're not doing enough streets. So it's, it's a tough one.
Right. And, and, and to, to Councilmember Maurer's point, you know, we delay it this year. We don't know what the makeup of the council will be next year, but, or the following year, or the following year, or the following year, because every year, three, half the council can be, switch and priority switch. The mayor's priority right now is streets, maintaining the streets and improving and doing more streets. Some of us feel it's a little bit of other things. I mean, which is, is a classic example of what, where I'm going, is that we can make a decision, but future councils could turn around and say, no.
And we haven't necessarily, I think, settled the special assessments. So do we want to continue on an aggressive streets plan when we haven't necessarily, I think, finished the special assessment discussion?
Well, given what we were presented earlier, that we're under and, and understanding, as Mr. Abbey pointed out, yes, there's less distance, but larger streets, but it's kind of been a trend over the last few years, that we're doing fewer and fewer.
And I think some of that is funding. Some of it's the pressure council gets from citizens that are tired of paying assessments. So I think she's got a good point, Councilmember Allison Osby, that we probably don't want to add to that until we know what's up with the assessment. Are we going to continue to assess our citizens? We going to have a new funding source? Is that new funding source going to add to the streets? Or add to any part of the program? Maybe it's not new streets, but we could do more cold-mixed asphalt streets and the, you know, lesser-used streets?
Right, right.
And stretch it that way? I don't know. But part of our strategic plan is maintaining our own facilities. And if we have a building that is no longer serviceable, that houses three different divisions in it, forestry, cemetery, and parks, I think that's, that's somewhat of a priority. It's part of our strategic plan.
And I think off of that, you know, I guess, and I don't know how the rest of council would feel about it, but if we would determine, you know, with the Parks building the phase one, if that is something that we would choose to add, you know, to the debt limit, or whether it's through the excess funds we have, to then. it's through the excess funds we have, to that part of our strategic plan and making sure that we stay current on our buildings and making them relevant, then I would say not to borrow, but if there's excess, then my second priority would be the Steiger Wing entrance expansion and renovation.
Yeah, I would concur with that. That again is our facility.
I would agree.
So, is, is.
So, does that change our tolerance level then?
No, I think, I think to your point, you're saying if there's, if there's.
Right.
If the city manager's correct with the, the extra money, we could take, you know, $450,000 of that million dollars and apply it towards these two projects.
Yes. Although I could be convinced that there is, I think, justification enough that although I wouldn't want to go past 12.5, I could be convinced to add a quarter of a mill or 250,005 to that. I could go either way. But that's the only project within this unfunded that I could live with adding to the 12.5.
My sentiments actually align nearly perfectly with Councilmember Allison Osby's on this particular one. Well, I did ask the question and we had four that said 12.5 is their tolerance level. My tolerance level would include the 250,000 for the parks building phase one. And if we have excess capital, basically at the end of fiscal 2019, I would like to find funding for the Steiger Wing.
Or, or, or go, or go the other way. Add the 225, which is, is, you know, a little less borrowing and then.
It's a little less borrowing, but I personally, I rank that, the parks building phase one higher in my personal decision. So, that's, that's the reason for that.
That's Mr. Finance Director.
That was just a compromise.
Yeah, you've been quiet for quite a while up there.
Well, my, my thought and recommendation to the city council is the two studies you identified for the parks building and for the museum, I don't think you'd want to borrow money for this design. I think they would be ideal projects if we have excess capacity in the general fund. And, and that assumption is not only the city managers, but it, it's a word of caution to all the, the department heads in, in the room tonight, is that it's based on the assumption that people are going to spend, based on the numbers they gave us at budget time, and that they continue to do their due diligence in going forward and, and controlling expenditures through the rest of the year. But I would suggest that you might, if you, you see those as your number one and number two priorities, we can, we can earmark that, but I wouldn't recommend borrowing for those projects. I would say, take it out of the fund balance.
Okay.
That's, that's kind of what I see.
But to that point, there are plenty of designs in our CIP already that we are funding with debt. So, it's not like we're not funding any designs. There's, there are.
There's some, that's, that's correct.
There are some already designed. But to that point, I, I don't disagree with the sentiment of that.
But he doesn't own those.
But he does.
No, but.
Correct.
Yeah, but you inherited them.
But that goes back though, then, that goes back though, that we're staying in that 12.5 range. And if the surplus is good and we can move these two, that, put it in that holding pattern, like you said, then we can move them forward. And we'll know that by the end of the year.
But I would say though, we need to make a commitment that we possibly amend if we find out that everybody went on a spending rampage of nothing.
Well, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to ruin department heads.
Look at all of them and give them that.
I don't want to ruin department heads thinking, but I know when I was at the sheriff's office, the sheriff had a deadline. There would be no budget dumping after this date. Everything would have to be approved by, by that time, the sheriff. Because it was notorious that if you cheap, cheap your budget until about October and then, oh geez, I got 10 grand to spend, 15 grand. They're going to buy a bunch of stuff.
We don't, we don't play that game.
And, and I, I don't think.
That's just straight up.
They play the.
Good.
But I think, I think both the city manager and the finance director have heard us loud and clear, loud and clear. If we all agree that's priority one, two, they'll figure out a way to make it happen if we don't want to borrow. Is that what I'm understanding?
I think, yeah.
Okay.
I would agree with that.
I think we all are.
So, the idea is we'll keep it at 12.5, but we will come back to you with a, a plan to.
When the checks cashed.
When the check, when the, when the checks cash.
When the deposit is.
We can come back and, and do those. I think we can figure out a way to get them budgeted because we, we have to get them authorized to do. And I think that the intent is you want them to get, be authorized.
Absolutely.
So, we'll do that. And just one final comment I want to make to Mr. Mauer's comments.
That's something I think this council, we got to start doing a little more of in a sense of when there's a study or there is something, like when we get the police department thing, we got to make a decision that we're going to go forward with that study. You know, and if we are, how are we going to fund that? Otherwise, just keep putting it on the burner and bring it back next year, next. That doesn't really resolve, solves anything. It just keeps putting it out there and kind of, you know, makes it look like we can't make tough decisions. Whether it's streets or whether it's buildings or whatever it might be.
But operationally, we did follow.
Sure.
Both police and fire. We are. So, I mean.
Right. We're, we're balancing overall, but I think this was a good point of, you know, if we're going to make a commitment to some of these building projects, we have to follow through with them.
Are we done with CIP?
I, I feel.
I think so.
Appreciate the feedback. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ray.
Sure.
Don't go too far.
The next thing we have is the operating budget. And, you know, while it's all up to council to, you know, whatever changes you may want to make, we did provide you with the memo from Mr. Van Gompo with the status of where we were based on last week's budget workshops, the spreadsheet here that has the, the blue and green shading for everybody for tracking purposes. The green are the ones that we.
So, nothing's changed since when we got this document last week?
Correct.
Okay.
So, really, you know, the green is what we took as direction from council. So, where that takes us is when we started the budget and the, the stuff that Russ showed you earlier, we were at $10, the top one under mill rate, 10.8296. We did four adjustments, the largest of which is the fire, for firefighters at a half year, and we're at 10.881. So, and we're at a 3.18% increase. Russ had explained earlier, 2.7. With the changes that you approved, or you gave us direction.
Right.
We're at 3.18. So, the ones, and then similarly, down at the bottom of the page, those are non-general funded. They're, they're either in a levy funded department that has revenue or in a utility or one of the proprietary funds. The ones in green were the ones that we, we got some general direction from council. The ones in white are, in both cases, are up in the air for council to, to go with. I'm certainly happy to any questions. You want any thoughts? I mean, we've, Mr. Van Gompo and I have discussed it. I've discussed it with all the department heads at one point or another. If you want some other additional recommendations, I'm happy to do those. Or if you have some strong preferences, I certainly, you know this stuff, you know, I can answer your questions. If you want some suggestions, I'm happy to give them to you. But you guys know what you're doing. If you want to do this, just tell me which ones you want to do and we'll do it.
Let me ask a question right away. So, the parks department one, we walked away from last week's meetings with a vague understanding of how we're going to fund those. Can you give us, can you give us some more detail on how you would, how you would fund those without putting it on the levy? So, we can talk about that.
Sure. Let me get the page number real quick.
That was one that we didn't have a, a clear understanding of, of funding.
That's, and that's why we didn't put that in green. I know there were, clearly the council had the intent, but there was, will you please show us how this is all going to work? So, I'm going to put that on Russ. Because Russ, Russ is the one who figured it out. And I appreciate the creativity that Russ is working at to, to make this happen. No pressure, Russ.
I know. 255, right?
Right.
Yeah. Uh, no, that's the fine number. That's not the page number. So.
Oh, okay.
I got to find the page number for you. It's like one.
Oh.
Uh.
Hang on. I'll help you.
173.
There you go. Thank you. 173?
Yes. If it's the same budget book I have.
It's 173. Yeah. I knew it all along.
Actually, I'm going to turn, actually flip to 174 because I, I like to deal with the numbers.
The actual, the actual numbers?
Go figure.
Why did I pick this guy?
I know.
So, the salary, if, if it was added, would get added into the, the expense category under regular pay, account number 6102. But you'll notice up on the top, under revenue, we have transfer from other funds coming in at $50,000. What we're basically doing is transferring money out of the general fund to cover a portion of the salaries that are being now directly moved into this fund. And it used to be the, the salaries that at one time were part of the golf course operational funds that is no longer being accounted for. And over time, that transfer would increase so that we get to the point where we're paying for the existing staff and new staff. By doing that and showing this as a transfer in, it does not fall under the rules for the expenditure restraint program in that we won't have a direct levy going into this fund. We'll be transferring money into the fund. It's a kind of an accounting terminology that's used to take advantage of, of the rules that have been dictated down to us. So, if you were to add one or two employees, we would have to increase the line 6102, the increased pay. We could do, we could increase the transfer now or later, but the, the goal would be that transfer in each year would be adjusted minimally in, in some blocks to get to full funding. In the meantime, we have some fund balance.
And all I can say is I wish I'd thought of it myself. So, I.
Well, we know you're not that smart.
Well, that's okay. Forget about that when you.
So, that's why it doesn't impact the levy.
Okay. That being said, you know, we talked about the fire department half year. By the time, Mr. Mauer, if you got those two positions approved, it'd probably be spring before they'd be on board anyways, correct?
Well, we actually just went through a recruitment for a parks maintenance position that is vacant right now. So, we may have an individual ready to go if we have another vacant position. So, the interviews were just, just took place last week and we may have two leading candidates for one of that.
So, you'd have an eligibility list, in other words.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. All right.
So, my recommendation would be to follow Russ's recommendation. We need the two maintenance workers.
Right.
And I, I think council, that was, it was just a matter of.
Yes.
Tell us that it's, tell us that you can make this work. I think Russ has figured out a way to do it.
Both positions for the.
Yes, both. Yeah. Because the.
Now, that 132.5 is salary fringes, everything, right?
Fully loaded.
Correct.
Yeah.
Or so then we'd have to build the building to put the extra people in.
Don't get greedy, Ray.
Before you speak.
Before you speak.
I'll look pretty.
Yeah, just smile.
Well, they got to work out of their car.
Yeah.
There's no room for them in the end.
If we're, if, if we want to move this long, I'm, I'm okay with the, the, the two adds or let's do it a better way. Is anybody opposed to it?
There you go.
There you go.
So, line item just went green up here.
They want to make them green. So, and that doesn't have any impact on expenditure restraint. And the other thing that the state gave us some new numbers, so we're only below the ERP cap.
By 186,019.
And $19. Anything we move from the, the white into the green on the upper part of the page is going to have an ERP impact. We only have $100,000 contingency right now. There may be value to leaving some of that money available for contingency. We would, we strongly recommend maxing out to the ERP limit. So, you're, you're under no obligation to spend it all, but we will commit it all for ERP purposes.
So, I have a question on the management analyst and the help desk. Would there be a potential for doing the half year thing on those two items as well?
The, did your director, oh, I'm sorry. Do you want me to answer?
Chief, why don't you come on up?
The director answers, yes. That's always a possibility. You just have to realize when you make that decision, that there's going to be an impact in 2021.
Of course.
And we're already doing that with the four firefighters. That's a huge number.
Yes, you are.
And with police, and we're absorbing that this year.
Right.
It's having an impact.
Right.
Full, full-fledged, you know, fully loaded numbers are important to remember.
And that's why we try to maximize our expenditure restraint capacity so that we know when we make a decision like that, that we're committing ourselves for the following year. And that's.
Getting it on the road.
Yeah. So, we have to be careful about that. And, and, and that's why we don't do that real often. But, you know, there are two there, the management analyst and the help desk.
Well, I can support half year, the management analysis. I think Chief Stanley has pointed out the importance of that position and some of the funding that they might be able to get that off the cost on the line in the future. Plus, frees up our battalion chiefs to really be doing what they should be doing, which is being chiefs, not administrative personnel.
But we might not be able to do the building maintenance.
Yeah, that might be a little custodian, but.
From my standpoint.
If you'd like to ask the chief, is there a priority system for those? I don't mean to cut everybody off, but.
No, it's a good question.
I would rather speak a little bit for the chief because the chief last week said it's a difficult decision. The battalion chiefs are the ones I'm concerned about the most. The management analysts will have a direct benefit to freeing up time for the BCS. The custodians, everybody pitches in on the custodial side. So, that's spreading the, that's spreading the, the work that remains. My recommendation to you would be the management analyst. With one possible request, I know half year seems, I would suggest three quarters of a year because you're going to be doing CIPs. You, you don't need it right away in January. It's, you're not going to really start recruiting in fall until January anyway, but I would suggest three quarters of a year, at least to, to give the chief time to select somebody and get them targeted to assist in CIP preparation and budget preparation and things like that.
That's probably the same thing with the help desk for the IT, I would think. Don't you think, Tony? By the time you hire the person, you're looking at probably.
I would say the sooner the better because I'm in a lot of the same position that Chief Stanley's in, whereas all the IT staff, including myself, are taking on a little bit of that now. And it's taken away from our primary duties. So, even if I can get half year moving into full year the subsequent year, that's a win.
It's council's three quarter or half?
I mean, do we agree that we're going to fill, fill that position? I guess that's the first question.
The, the, the look that I'm getting, if I was to read a mind, I'm thinking three quarters. I don't know. I'm just going to throw it out there.
Don't have a poker face, do you?
Not too good. All right.
Are we okay with three?
Three, three quarters on the management analyst, right?
Yes.
So, now the, yeah.
And then half on the help desk? Three quarters?
I think three quarters.
Or three quarters on that one too?
Probably starting tomorrow.
Yesterday.
Well, by the time you, you figure it gets in the budget, January, they got a post opening. I imagine you do internal posting first, right? If they're being an internal candidate.
But you really don't start recruiting until January anyway.
So, we're saying slow roll it, boys. Understood.
Patience is a virtue, apparently. I'm, I'm fine with.
Three quarters for both?
Both of them. Correct.
Everybody else?
Mm-hmm.
Then my appetite is wearing thin at, at that point for additional enhancements.
For those two, that would add another three cents because they both total about four cents for a full year. So, three quarters would be about three.
So, what do we have for remaining?
So, then we're at, we went from 1088 to 1091-ish. Now, Russ will give you the exact numbers, but we're at like 1091.
ERP cap, you've probably got about 70,000-ish.
Yeah, probably.
Roughly.
Yeah. You probably, yeah. Yeah, you dropped it, you dropped 120 with that.
Is.
So, now you're only down to 60,000. My comfort, I just, yeah, my, my comfort zone just got a little weird.
Is John Urban here for admin services?
John is here for facilities.
Facilities.
And Michelle Benke is here for HR.
Okay.
They're just hiding in the back. So, you can come up and.
Yeah, I just had a question on the.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you did the work on the diversity training.
Yes.
There's 20 in here. Does 10 do anything or is it all or nothing?
It would certainly get us started. Obviously, what we want to do is, is work with a partner who can help us evaluate our needs, help us design and deliver the most effective training for our organization. So, 10 is definitely better than nothing. We would just need to scope what we would partner with someone to do this year differently than.
So, this is based on an actual like quote from?
We don't have a, a quote per se, but we've talked to a few different. We don't have a, a quote per se, but we've talked to a few different partners, um, potential partners, as to what, everything that I would like to do, um, you know, surveying employees, uh, doing training for the entire organization, developing a, a plan for, for future years. Um, we figured we would be able to do it with that amount of money. Now, again, I would definitely look to scope just a little differently if I, if I have some funding. Yes.
So a question I have is, I think, you know, we've, we've talked about this, and I think, you know, this is something I think we've all kind of identified as, um, you know, a need. Is that something, because we're not suggesting that this goes into the budget every year, correct? This is just for twenty-twenty? Is this something that perhaps the city manager and the finance director could fund through the potential excess?
I think so.
Yes. So is this a contin, I don't, I'm not sure. Is this a one-time shot or a continuous effort?
Um, so the, the biggest amount would be to, to begin the partnership and strategy. Um, obviously, I would like some training money each year to continue working with our staff, uh, but I think this was kind of the, the largest amount to really get a, a plan in place and then figure out year after year, obviously, what are we gonna do to continue to drive that culture the way we want to.
It's not a one-and-done.
No, I didn't mean that, but I meant, like, is it twenty thousand every year moving forward?
No.
Or is this something in which we?
Twenty-five.
Exactly.
Right, and, and we haven't.
Because that's, that's different, you know, because then I would be comfortable asking the city manager and the finance director, is that something that could be funded through the potential excess? And then, again, to the point of if we're going to do something, are we going to move forward? I guess my question would be if we were to do some type of ongoing training or have it part of orientation for new staff or whatever, however it's designed, I, I don't know what, what you have in mind, but again, is it twenty thousand or is it more like seventy-five-hundred, five thousand, whatever? Because then that is something that we would have to say then if we, if we do it, which I'm, I mean, I, I would be okay with that, but then, um, if we could take it out of the excess, but then going forward, we need to know that we would need to incorporate that into the, um, the budgets going forward.
Before, one question I have, with that diversity training, are you looking at you or somebody on staff being trained then down the line?
Train the trainer.
Train the trainer?
Okay, all right.
It would be a train the trainer. You know, of course, we, we may need help in the future developing content.
For sure.
And things like that, but this would be the, what would get us started with an overall plan, a train the trainer, um, doing training for everybody within the organization, and then, of course, we would want to continue doing training and, and initiatives to change, again, our culture.
Maybe to Councilmember Allison Osby's point, is it something where, um, maybe you can get us more information? That maybe you can get us a little bit more of that ongoing cost so we can make that informed decision? It doesn't sound like maybe we can make it tonight, but maybe we can make that.
By next week.
Councilman, yeah.
Uh, in the future, whether it's short-term, you know, whether it's now or short-term.
Well, obviously, there, there's some discussion because there's a number here. So, I mean, you, you didn't, so walk us through the, walk us through the, the number, please, just for two seconds.
Right, so we, we've met with a few different organizations, and this would basically include, um, having an expert come and work with us, um, do some surveying of our organization to determine, you know, where are our largest needs? Um, I have my own opinions, of course. Our largest need is inclusion to begin with, um, and be able to develop a plan not only for this year but going forward. So I do expect that this would be the bulk of it, and in the future, we would continue doing training, which would have some costs, but this would, uh, basically, this is what they thought it would cost for us to be able to do that surveying, um, be that partner.
Kickstart it.
Yep.
Okay.
Train the trainer, develop curriculum to get us through this year and, and keep us moving forward. So we are by no means at a final point with anyone, um, but we did talk to a few organizations just to kind of see what they thought it was gonna cost because, um, I, I didn't want to just put a number in the budget.
You, you want ten, you threw out ten, is that what you're saying?
I was just wondering if it was even something that would be helpful or if that would not, so.
I like.
I, I like.
Councilmember Allison Osby paid out of the surplus.
So, so I would ask Mr. Roloff then to advise us if, if can you, could you?
I think, I think with, uh, I mean, we're only talking twenty thousand dollars in, in the context of a potential million-dollar surplus, I think we can, we can figure this out.
Okay.
We'll give you our recommendation. We'll, we'll chat a little bit about it, but I think we got the basic message. We'll get it in there, we'll get it.
Can I add to the list?
That, that is why you're here.
One way or the other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, just, it, it's come up a couple of times with plan commission, uh, there's like a fifty-five-hundred-dollar cost to potentially, um, those, they meet two times a month, um, and probably the equivalent, um, in hard copy to, uh, purchase ten tablets for them to utilize instead of the, um, significant cost for, I'm sorry, copying in time, and Ms. Roloff provided fifty-five-hundred for ten of those.
Yeah, that would be, Tony, that's, yeah. I was signaling, you're welcome, Dean, but I was signaling Tony.
Unless you know something about tablets for a plan commission.
He's my strong arm. Stay here, I may need you.
He's gonna tell us some bad news.
Tickets, I don't know.
No, um, I, I put the numbers together, basically it was to accommodate the, uh, moving to iPads for plan commission and the, uh, cost of the, uh, protective covers for them. This does not take into account, um, the cost for delivery of plan commission agendas or the current, uh, delivery postage, things like that. Right now, the cost offset is about a three-point-six-year payback if we move from regular agendas to iPads for plan commission.
And the life for the tablet?
Android cost is about the same right now.
Is it?
Priced as of yesterday.
So every three-point-six years, you'd have that replacement equalization?
Every, in three-point-six years, those tablets will be paid for themselves.
But then you're gonna probably need new tablets another, within a year after that.
Uh, I would say probably, based on the consumption by council, I would say more like four, four to five-year. You guys are actually pretty good with them, most.
Yep.
Does, does, does that mean each, um, member of the plan commission has to get a city email address then?
We would, uh, have to talk about logistics of how we're going to be handling.
There be any costs to that?
This is all, yes.
To get email addresses to the.
If we did city email accounts, because that's an exchange mailbox, requires Microsoft licensing because Microsoft owns everything.
Got you. You know, I can show you where to get some pirated licenses.
I'm just sending it into the.
I'm kidding.
You might want to.
So there is some additional, not a lot, but an additional cost besides the tablet.
Annual licensing fees.
And licensing fees and things like that.
If we chose, if, if we chose to go that route, yes.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
I'm only in full support of it if it's one-hundred percent mandatory, that nobody opts out at the plan commission level.
So if everybody agrees?
That if, if there's one person still getting printed copies, then it's not worth it.
Because then it's.
Because then one person, then.
Because then all the work that Dave does, all the work Dave does to make, you know, ten copies is.
Only if it's for full compliance only.
And then what are we gonna do in future requests for other boards and commissions coming forward?
I truly believe, and I, the plan commission is different.
I, I agree with that.
They, they meet, they're the only commission that meets twice a month.
Twice a month.
And it's, it's, I mean, we, we were generous, this was a, a very light plan commission agenda this week. We cost it out based on this week's plan commission, it's usually double that, the size. So, you know, we, we feel pretty comfortable about.
It was a very conservative estimate.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, we could do what you're suggesting, what Councilmember Allison Osby suggested, try to find it within, we'll find a way to do it without necessarily impacting the budget negatively, but we'll, uh, especially this being a one-time.
The fifty-five-hundred is a pretty solid figure. The payback, I'm guessing, is probably gonna be a little faster because, again, we use very conservative numbers on what it's costing us right now.
And you said that did not include the CSO's delivery, postage.
Doesn't, it didn't, again, those are costs that we didn't have prepared.
Planning staff delivers a plan commission.
This is a no-brainer. I mean, it, it is, this is just, I mean, we gotta give it to them.
They're behind many other communities in that regard.
So we'll.
So Russ, add that to the.
Well, we'll save some money in printing and binding and whatever else. I, you know, I think half of the things we get on Friday council packets could be sent electronically versus having to see it, so.
We'll get there.
Deliver to senior doings, I mean, uh, it doesn't make sense to me.
Are you done now?
Where we're at right now, and we're not, we're gonna figure out a way to do both the iPads and the diversity training, but where we're at right now, Russ, if you want to highlight the, we're at a levy increase of three-point-four-three percent. The rate is just slightly under ten dollars and ninety-one cents, if I'm correct, yeah, just slightly under ten ninety-one, and expenditure restraint, Russ, word about, keep going a little more, seventy-one thousand under the, the cap.
So with that being said, what does the average homeowner's bill gonna go up? If you can do that.
Well, I, I, well, I, before, before we get into that, I want to talk about one thing, and I know, I, I, I waited for Bob to get here because I'm sure Bob and I are gonna have a debate about this, but he, I have a real problem with, with the museum. I don't have a problem taking money away from them, I, I, I continue supporting them at this level, but as you can see, they, they're the fourth-largest impact on the levy, right?
Oh, the library.
The lib, I'm sorry, library, on the library, so, sorry, library. So I, I, I guess I don't have a problem funding them.
Mr. Larson smelling.
Oh, it's.
Chief Stanley's calling the paddles.
Is that the fibrillator back there?
Is Jeff here?
Jeff is not here, so.
Okay, all right.
But he didn't, there's something in the library here.
I, I, I just, we, we don't have enough accountability on this, and I don't know if it, if I'm the only person that bothers that we hand over this kind of money and we don't have any oversight over this.
Is that how every community is, though? I mean, that's just pretty much what it is in twenty-nineteen, isn't it?
But, I mean, they're number four on our, are they three or four on our, on, on our levy impact, uh, on departments? I mean.
They're fourth.
They were four on the list that Mr. Van Camp.
And Public Works was five?
Public Works was five, but Public, Public Works had a little bit of breakdown, so it's fourth or fifth, depending on how you look at it.
Okay, I mean, that, that just, I just, I just don't feel comfortable, you know, constantly attacking the levy, you know, with what's going on there. Their, their, their customers are down thirty-five percent, um, we, we don't have an account of their, their volunteer hours and, and things like that. I just, there, this, this board, or this council has absolutely no impact on, on, on what goes on there. We just turn our check over to them, and I have a real problem on behalf of the taxpayers with that.
I'm really glad that we at least are valuing literacy in the community at the same level as public safety because, as, as we've talked about before, future generations, and, and I, I respect what you're, what you're saying, but it's my understanding that with the library too, some of that is, um, uh, dictated by the structure, which is somewhat different in the Winifoc system. And so I, maybe Mr. Van Camp or Roloff, you can.
Well, by state law, public libraries are, uh, run by a separate board. Once council gives them their allocation, they are free to spend it, uh, within their, their discretion, and that's, that's in the statutes and that's pretty well established. So that is a limit. That is different than, than any other department. Uh, in the state, you have some police and fire commissions that have a word called optional powers, where they have similar responsibilities or capabilities. When I was in Berlin, the police and fire commission did the same thing with the library, or did, with the same thing with police and fire that libraries do, uh, throughout the state, so, uh, there aren't, there are only like thirteen cities like that, but the issue is that you don't have the, you don't have the, you don't get to exercise the control the same way you do. You can, you can give me some directions, some policy direction, uh, and you can even change your mind mid-year, but say we'd like you to change something. So that's the difference between the two.
So I, I just, I just look at this stuff, a part-time temp wages and benefits, um, additional wage and benefits for current, and, and when I was here, I, I thought I heard Jeff say that, you know, their, their, their users are down thirty-five percent.
That's the museum.
Oh, am I back at the museum again?
Yeah, there's nothing on the library.
Oh, isn't there, all right. So I got library and museum confused about.
Step away from the museum.
Exactly. Step away. Boy, I'm just killing you back there, aren't I? Am I gonna, am I gonna have four flat tires? Thank you. But I, I just.
So may I make a recommendation?
Sure.
So I think, I think what would be very helpful, and this is just based on experience, whenever I've had heartburn about something in particular in any department, is probably reaching out to Jeff.
Well, I, absolutely, and he, he offered, he offered me a tour and everything, I'm gonna take advantage of it, so.
I would say, because I think maybe, I think sometimes when you're hands-on and you're there and you see it and you have the opportunity, and maybe perhaps he would even invite maybe his, um, you know, board chair, um, or a couple members of the board, um, to that meeting as well, and, you know, that way you can air some of your concerns and maybe have some dialogue so that.
And, and maybe this is just the way it is, but I just, I, I have heartburn handing over that kind of money and we don't get a say in anything. It's just, it's, it's, it gives me an adjustment, and it should give citizens some adjustment too. And again, I'm not saying take a nickel away from them, I'm just saying increasing the levy for the library, I, I, I think needs to be proven out to us.
But there is no request for increasing the levy on the library.
Oh, yeah, it's a seventy-thousand dollar.
Seventy thousand dollars.
Oh, now I'm missing.
No, and it's not, it's not an enhancement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's not an enhancement.
Okay.
The, um, the levy, and I was just trying to carry forward the budget enhancements, but right now, uh, in your recommended budget, we have a two-point-eight percent increase in the levy for the library, is two million, seven seventy-two, seven hundred. It's an increase of seventy-six thousand dollars, or about two-point-eight percent.
And that's.
So that's just increasing, um, wages to current staffing?
Well, as the city manager just told you, it's, it's a policy decision of this body what that number's gonna be. Um, how that gets utilized is really a library board's function. So if there's heartburn about the levy, you know, one possible thought or discussion point is, you know, do you do the seventy-six thousand dollar increase or you leave that flat?
And, and I guess that's what I'm proposing to everybody. I don't want to take a nickel away from them, from what I understand, but increasing, increasing that two-point, is it two-point-eight?
I'm sorry, no, I got the cursor hanging over there, but it's two-point-eight.
Two-point-eight percent is, is, that gives me heartburn. And again, I'm, I'm saying.
Would that be, would that be reducing, like, if that were to go flat, reduce, would that mean that other potential personnel throughout the city would be getting potential raises and, uh, nobody in the library would?
The library determines the raises for their employees. They maintain sole control.
Right, but they would, if that wasn't done, then they would not be able to do that, correct?
It's up to their choice on how they have that impact.
Cause remember, they have a separate fund, and once we give it to them, it's there.
It's gone.
I mean, it's, it's reflected, page 152 is where, where you're going to see this.
But we just really truly don't know what that 2.8% would do to them taking that away.
Well, but nobody's here telling it to me either.
No more free wifi, I mean, we don't offer free wifi in the city, and if they're forced to reduce, then.
But I, we don't know, you don't, you're speculating, we're all speculating because we don't know, we're going to hand them a check for 2.7 million dollars.
I just, I just, right now, went back to the, a flat, and what that would do to the dollar amount, this is not the enhancements, this is with the enhancements, but, um, so you would have to add that difference to here, which is about.
I, I just have a significant problem not knowing where this money's going, I just.
Are we allowed to know where the money goes and then?
You do know where it's going.
Not say yes or no, but then the next year we can use as a judgment of what to give?
Over the years, the library levy has gone up and down over the years. There used to be a law that said we couldn't change it by more than a certain percent, that law would, so the council does have the discretion. Uh, 76,000 is roughly two cents, a little less than two cents, just as a, as a, as a point of reference.
I can appreciate Councilmember Miller's, uh, the sentiment behind not increasing the levy. Um, I've had several sentiments on, uh, last year's budget and this one, and I voiced, voiced them as well. Um, but to say that you don't know where it's going, I take exception with that because I can look at page 155 and 156, and I know exactly where 2.772 million is going to go. To your point though, I don't know if you suggested an adjustment to it, I don't know where 2.7 will go because they can choose to absorb that difference however they would like.
Right.
To, to that point.
Absolutely. So, I guess, I'm just a little frustrated that we just turn this money over, we don't have any control. My suggestion would be we keep it flat, we don't take a nickel away from them, but we, we just keep it flat until we get a better handle on this.
I can't support that.
The, looking at their budget.
But based on why can't you support it, is what I'm asking, that, I, I want everybody to think about this, we, we just don't have any control over this.
But the, the board, um, does, and, um, we've, you know, we've got a collective board there between county, city, and, um, other townships that are overseeing that, that I, that I trust, um, to oversee that in a, you know, fair and equitable way, that, that's my rationale.
And to me, looking at their budget, line item by line item, which, which generally, it's in our purview, but we don't do too much, their biggest increase is pension. They have a pension reserve, they go from $0 in 2019 reserve to a $90,000 pension reserve. They're going to have some retirements, that's what they're budgeting for. So, the 76,000 dollar increase, actually 90,000 is potentially going towards retirement.
Right here. Um, that's more of a, what the finance department assigned them, that's the, paying back the old WRS, uh, prior service pension, that, that was a big borrowing done in 2014, that's the library share that we, I, I believe we hadn't allocated. Um, so that, I think that was, we assigned that as a number, um, and that's a part of their increase. One of the other ways you could do it is you could certainly ask Mr. Gilderson Dewey to come and say what this would mean for, for the library, or ask him to provide it to you, what it would mean if there was a cut of 76,000 and how that would be.
Well, it's not a cut, it's not a cut, I mean, we haven't given them the money yet, so.
Yeah, if the levy, if the levy was reduced, what, would that have a service impact and if so what?
And, and so, does this go back a couple of years to the assignment then, did you say, by the finance department to cover that?
Well, every department, uh, non-general fund gets assigned that, and I don't know how it was done previously, and, and Russ doesn't know either because he wasn't here, but we allocated that for some reason, and I'm not sure if it's because it was, used to be in a different line item and now it's in a new line item.
That's what I seem to remember the former finance director explaining, was that each department got assigned.
Okay, so.
But I'm looking at, in the system, and we have it at other departments, like Transit got it, but they've always had it.
Yeah.
And if I'm the only person that has a concern about this, that, that, that's fine, but.
Maybe you're just going to ask for more transparency next year.
Well, I may.
I waited for you.
Um, I think I'd actually, uh, go along with Mr. Roloff in suggesting that Jeff kind of just give us an explanation. I don't think Jeff needs to come back to us and sit in front of us until.
No, no, I, no.
I think if he wants to compile a memo saying, hey, there's been some questions about, uh, this increase to the levy, this is what we're planning on using it for, this is how it'll affect us if, if we don't, I, I have no problem with, with that question being asked, um, within that process. Um, I would have a huge problem with cutting it much past what they had last year without any full, further regard for that, um, but I, I have no problem with asking them for that information.
Certainly do that, and to have them provide it in the packet.
Sure.
This week, before, before the end of the week, we could do that.
But I don't think we should suggest to make a change to that until we've been provided greater information.
We can ask, we can ask Jeff to do that. Okay, Russ, you want to go back and see where, do a recap of where we're at?
Um, let me just, I want to do one.
You had asked what that did to the average home.
Yeah. Oops, why did I do that?
Better undo that.
I shouldn't have done that. Just bear with us a moment. On the average, on the average tax bill, it would see an increase of $48.83 for the year?
Average tax bill is $150,000.
$150,000 house.
Is that our median, is that our community median?
The best of my, I.
Cause we were at 120 like three, four years ago.
I think we're still roughly there, but I think trying to relate to.
Sure.
And I'm not sure that your previous budgets had that illustration.
No.
And, and I kind of did it based on that, and I did not check with the assessors office if that's the median.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, I think it was around 120.
I think we asked like 100,000, what would a hundred, every 100,000.
I think we thought that 100,000 was too low.
About 100 or 125?
Well, no, I mean, every, every 100,000 of a home, how much would it cost?
In recent years, because of inflation, I think more communities have been using 150.
Oh, jeez, what a.
Yeah, don't you?
I like that number, negative.
Yeah.
So, we started the evening at 37, now we're at 48. Gives you a rough idea about it, yeah, upped at about $11, but you did, and that included every enhancement, not just, cause that was the base budget, right? The $37 that you had at the beginning?
Yes, that would, this is including all the enhancements.
That includes everything that you added last week and then tonight, so.
All the green.
That's all the green, so.
A lot of value for $11.
That's a good way to talk.
Just when you look at fire safety in there, um, as I said, we took on more parkland now that we have to maintain, so I think it's a good value.
So, that's where, so we're at a levy of, or, uh, 40, 40 million, is that right? 40 million? I think you're right, yeah. So, about 1.3, a million 350 roughly, uh, levy increase of 3.44%.
Do you know from 2019 to 2020 what the?
The rate?
Yeah, increase in the budget to the average taxpayer.
Uh, yeah.
Did it go up? I mean, I know what the increases are, but.
The increases, but from what they paid last year to this year, they're paying? $48.83.
Correct, more than they did last year.
Yes.
And that's a 3.08% increase?
Yes.
To the homeowner.
Uh, somebody that owns a $150,000 house.
Okay.
So, that's where we're at? I'm not sure.
And again, can you, for, for the people at home, what is the city's portion of that on a $150,000 house? That, that's, that's what I want to, I want to show everybody at home one more time.
Uh, it'd be $1,636.15.
For a $150,000 home, cities, the city's portion is, the, the city's portion is 1,600 bucks, okay? I think that's real important because we get lumped in with everybody else, so.
The school's separate.
Yep, yep.
But when they come and pay the bill, they pay it here.
Right, exactly.
And that's why I kind of went through that exercise.
Oh, that's great, appreciate that.
Illustrating. And then those earlier PowerPoint slides are based on the original proposed budget and didn't include the enhancements that were discussed and, and suggested prior to the meeting and then plus the ones added, but the 40, the 40 million 756,058 includes the budget enhancements from last Tuesday and tonight.
Can we have that updated slide on Tuesday?
Absolutely. The slide, the PowerPoint slide?
Yeah, for the council meeting.
Yeah, I can do that.
The one with the.
Updated, breaks down for each cost or what it costs.
The monthly cost for, yeah. That was, that was the highlight of the night, I think.
Wow. Um, there are just a couple other quick things, if I, if I may, um, Jennifer, could you help me out real quick? Um, when I did the slide this evening, I had the all funds graph, um, and we've re, we've rerun it with, uh, the, the adjusted numbers for the prior years, um, so it's being handed out right now.
That makes sense.
Is a picture of what happens to all the other revenue sources, if you look at all of the special revenue funds and all of the enterprise funds, so it's all-inclusive. Um, the, the previous years was not all-inclusive, so, um, that's for your information, and then I'm going to ask you real quickly, I had a couple of comments, uh, that came back to me about, um, the salary numbers by department for each of the ones, and I think you had contacted, uh, the city manager about that. Instead of rerunning all the pages, I did an, an additional handout for you this evening, and all it does is show the salaries and the positions, for the most part, for the most part, it's fairly, it's, it's spot on, there are some things that, on some of the FTEs might not match up, um, perfectly. One example is elections. Um, we have a dollar amount for the new elections coming up, but the FTE show one and it's, and it's more than one election worker, and I, we didn't get the right number, our, our Munis system didn't have the right number, and so, um, just take it with a grain of salt, it's used as a reference point, um, and if, did we get all of the departments in here or are we missing, still missing?
You're missing a few.
Yeah, there's not all of them there, but.
Thank you for getting us the supplemental info, appreciate that.
That's why we had added the FTE columns. And should be, that should be full-time equivalent?
Oh, yeah, there is, okay.
Yeah, it should be full-time equivalent, uh, positions, so.
Yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll update this levy sheet, uh, summary sheet, and we'll have the resolution in the packet, um, and I'll try to get that PowerPoint done, if you want me to run through that, uh, the night of the adoption, I can do that one more time real quick, or if you just want the slide, I can just send it out as part of the pack.
I'm just wondering, um, when you said FTEs, I'm looking at the crossing guards real quick, um, it just shows, shows one?
Yeah, that's one of those, that's one of those things that we, there's a little quirk when we were pulling it out of Munis and DeHira, how many crossing guards, chief?
17.
We have 18 crossing guards and we have three alchemists.
So, that's a lump sum for all the crossing guard positions?
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions on what I, the supplemental information?
I was going to say, I'm, I'm going to quit council and be a crossing guard.
You got to cover a lot of schools.
It's a lot less brief.
Could you do both?
The kids bring you candy.
You have time, you could do both.
Oh, yeah, because it's all the, yeah, all the, that's all we have, Madam Mayor, thank you, appreciate the feedback.
Staff was awesome, thank you. We, we asked for a lot of detail and we got it, so thank you.
Very, very much.
It took a little longer, but that's, quality is.
What it is.
And I believe Deputy Mayor has a motion he'd like to.
Yeah. I move that following the adjournment of this meeting that the council may convene in the closed session pursuant to section 19.85, parent one, parent C of the Wisconsin State Statutes to discuss the performance evaluation compensation regarding the city manager employee over which the common council's jurisdiction, you're going to exercise his responsibility.
Second.
On favor?
No, no, no.
No, no.
Voice vote.
Ugrower?
Yep.
Rousey?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Allison Osby?
Hi.